Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the Select Board meeting on Monday, August 12th, 5:30 here at the Lakeville Police Station. LakeCam is recording this meeting. Is there anybody else in the audience or any members recording this evening? Okay. Oh, come on, because you don't want to play it back later? That's all right. Okay, if we can, I'd like to ask you all to rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So here in attendance this evening, we have Member Fabian, myself, Lorraine Carboni, Member Candido, Member Day, and Interim Town Administrator, Mr. Nunes. And with that, I'd like to jump right into our Select Board announcements for the evening. Clear Pond Park's last day of the season will be August 25th. Can you believe it's almost the end of August? Right for that. It is open seven days a week, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Our town clerk would like to notify our residents that all residents of Lakeville 18 years of age and over, who are not already registered voters, must be registered to vote by Saturday, August 24th, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. It's the final date in time to be registered for the upcoming state primary election, which will be held on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. Early voting for September 3rd primary will be taking place at the Lakeville Public Library on August 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And August 26th through August 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And lastly, August 30th, from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. The primary voting will take place at Lunfon Lodge at Ted Williams Camp at 28 Precinct Street on September 3rd, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We still have a few vacancies. We did receive a few letters of interest. A couple of those we'll be voting on this evening. But we still are looking for members to join us on the Cable Advisory Committee, the Cemetery Commission, Energy Advisory, and the Parks Commission. And lastly, I'd like to just touch base with a little fun fact, because you know how I am. Lakeville played a significant role in the 18th century iron industry with its numerous ironworks. Believe that, not just lakes. The iron produced in Lakeville contributed in the American Revolutionary War. Little fun fact. Any other Select Board members have anything they'd like to add?
Um, no. Well, it could be an announcement. So we all got notification that Congressman Ockingkloss was going to be here on Friday at the Senior Center. I think Bob had sent that to us.
Yes.
So he has worked, he has come here for a bus tour and everything of the APC, the Assawamse Pond Complex, and he's been very avid at trying to help us, whatever we can do. So he sat with the seniors for a while. He gave them some really, really good information on some bipartisan changes that they're trying to make affecting, you know, like the cost of insulin and everything. So it was extremely appropriate for that audience. I thought it was great. But we, he gave us, not gave us, he sat with us for about a half hour after the coffee hour was done, and he really helped explain to us how he can and can't, you know, help us with all the APC stuff. I do want to thank Nancy Yates. She put together a whole folder for him for an update. And I did get this digitally, so I will send it to all of you. But it just, you know, the action items we have in that action item list. So, and this is updated, this is the updated version from Serped. So this is the original. You can see it in green here. And this is where it's at, what stage. So it's a whole lot of information. We can talk about this one night if you want to, but I figured it was a great meeting with him. Senator Rodericks was there, Representative Oral was there, as was Nancy Yates. It was a great meeting, and I will forward this to everyone, and we can probably get some of it on the website, too, so.
Excellent. Question or comment?
Yeah.
Thank you, Leah, for being there for, you know, at the meeting and hosting. If there's ever an opportunity again, maybe we can get LakeCam so we can involve a broader audience and have them kind of post it, and then maybe it reach a bigger audience. Because I know, you know, Friday, that's a difficult time for a lot of people to...
Yeah, it is during the day. It was, it was nice, but honestly, if I knew that he was going to be talking about some of these potential bipartisan bills, I, that was my first thing was, oh my God, I wish, you know, that would have been really great. So, and he doesn't, you know, he probably comes here once a year, but...
Yeah, yeah, no, but if we get the chance again, we should all, like, keep it top of mind, so we can get it to a broader audience.
Yep, agreed. Yep, so, yep. And then honestly, there was some folks there, too. A group of folks had come. It was a, you know, a gentleman who had to speak through digitally through his assisted device, but he actually asked the congressman to look into the threshold. So the asset level, I think, is $2,000, and then you start losing some of your benefits. So it was a nice organized group that came to represent, you know, folks in that, being affected by that, because we know even with today's inflation, $2,000 is not a lot of money. And if you get more, if you earn more than $2,000, then you learn like, you lose like all your, a lot of these benefits. So it was, it was nice, because that was the perfect, it was really a good, a good day. But point very well taken, especially when he was talking about these bipartisan bills.
So, sounds great.
Yep.
Thank you for being there.
Brian, Brian, anything? All right. Mr. Nunes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things. I had several meetings with the DPW Director regarding road improvements and infrastructure in the town. As you all know, you received an email last week regarding some of the road projects that will be taking place. Work will start next Monday and continue Tuesday and Wednesday, so that's August 19th, 20th, and 21st for various road resurfacing projects in town. Second item, I had a good meeting last week with the town accountant regarding, we reviewed year-to-date actuals, both on the revenue side and expenditure side. I'm pleased to announce that we ended the year strong. We did exceed our revenue projections for fiscal year 24, and the balance sheet will be submitted to the Department of Revenue sometime at the end of August, early September. And the last item, last week, the Building Commissioner and I had a meeting with Taunton Water Superintendent Mike Aruda. We talked about a number of issues at your request. We talked about, in general, water allocation for the town, actual usage, the project at 43 Main Street and La Barren Hills. We will regroup with Taunton and representatives from Rhino Capital, probably within the next several weeks, hopefully before our next Select Board meeting, to talk about a few of the issues for 43 Main Street, and hopefully can iron them out, answer any questions that either side had before they submit a formal application or request for water. So, that is it. And regarding La Barren Hills, they have requested, the residents have requested that we be put on next meeting agenda. Obviously, you and I will talk and Tracy when we put the agenda review together, but they are planning to come to the next meeting, and we did talk to Taunton Water about that issue as well. That is it.
Anybody have anything for Mr. Nunes?
Thank you for doing that. I know that's something that they've been trying to get for a while.
Yes.
Certainly. All right. Minutes of July 22nd, did everybody have a chance to take a look at them?
Yes.
All right. And we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes, the Select Board meeting minutes of July 22nd, 2024. So...
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Tracy, I have one thing on page 13, and it's just typo, third paragraph down where it says Member Day said he can appreciate. It should be appreciate instead of appreciation, but I'll give you my copy, so you have that. Any other discussion?
I just had one, and I might be wrong, so on page 12, under new business, doesn't see as a potential error, a matter of time, a lot of things are building up. I thought it was adding up, but very nominal clerical.
Where was that? Page 12, 1, 2, 3, 4.
Oh, building up, I see.
Yeah, I thought it was adding up when I was listening, but...
Okay. I'll hand that to Tracy. All right. There's none, none other?
I have one, but I can't find it. It was just a location, I thought, but... I know I highlight and flip page, you know, the little corners of the pages so I could go back and remember.
Well, I was reading it online.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, hearing, no, one more discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Fabian.
Thank you, I.
Carboni, I. Candido, I.
I.
All right. Next agenda item is the discussion of dissolving the Senior Center Feasibility Study Committee. This came up in discussion at our last meeting, so it's appropriate to put it on the agenda for this evening. I believe the work and the charge that was presented to the Senior Center Feasibility Study has been met, and we have evolved into now more of a Senior Center addition group, working group. So I'll entertain a motion to dissolve this Senior Center Feasibility Study Committee. So...
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Do we have to vote the, the next committee? I think it's just more of a working group. I don't think there's...
Yeah, there's no committee. It's just...
Okay. Just staff. Sounds good. And I'd like to publicly just thank all those involved in this committee. I know there was a lot of work and time and energy put into evaluating the situation and, you know, how we could expand the desires and needs of our senior center. So I really appreciate the work that we've gone, that's gone into this, and I think it's important that when we do form these feasibility study committees, that, you know, there is a result, you know, that can be digested and palatable to those, so, but thank you.
Yes, if I had a comment, I know I've made it before. For those of you listening at home, originally, this project was supposed to be around $2, $2.5 million. The feasibility committee whittled it down to about $200,000 and really thought out of the box and made some really good improvements and still was able to offer what they were looking for. So I wanted to commend them for being good stewards of our dollars in the town of Lakeville and for making the change that needs to happen in the least impactful dollar type of way. So good, good job on that.
Here, here. And most of the folks on the committee are still with the project. It's just me and Katie Deroche, I think, who was representing the community, that are, but everyone else is so...
Take all that work with them. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Oh, Fabian, I.
Don Huhain.
Carboni, I. Candido, I.
I.
Okay. In front of us, we have a letter that we received from our Regional Resources Group regarding the action plan by the, that was requested by the Board of Assessors on rectifying the preliminary tax bills. So I know that this is in the packet and, but I, I would like to take a moment just to read it into the record if the Select Board will entertain that. All right, so on August 8th, 2024, we have a letter to the Select Board, and it reads as follows. As CEO and a tax assessor working for Regional Resource Group, Inc., RRG, allow me to respond to recent concerns over the preliminary tax bills issued to waterfront property owners. I perhaps more than anyone responsible for the administration of Lakeville's assessing office am upset by the mistake leading to issuance of several hundred erroneous tax bills. The error was not intentional. I believe that it can be resolved, easily resolved. In this letter, I will identify the problem and spell out a course of action. First, the source of the error. One of the preliminary goals of our office is to annually test our standing property valuations against property sales. As part of that exercise, we look for patterns of over and under assessment. Disparities in assessments must be resolved when formulating the next fiscal year's tax assessments, a process that is normally undertaken late summer or early fall before the issuance of July tax bills. We have noted that waterfront properties are selling at a substantial premium over assessed value, more so than the mainstream of Lakeville's properties. In an exercise to see how much waterfront land rates would have to be increased to bridge the gap between assessed value and sale price, trial rates were introduced into our assessment system. These rates were in no way intended to remain in the system until a more in-depth analysis was undertaken and vetted by me and the Board of Assessors. Regrettably, the test rate was not reset. The tax billing file sent over to the tax collector prior to the issuance of July tax bills contained some number of valuations that were based on the test rate. Erroneous tax valuations ensued. Fiscal year 2025 property valuations will be finalized this fall. Draft values will be reviewed with the Board of Assessors around the end of September, with a scheduled draft release made available to the public around the middle of October. I will be conducting a public presentation at that time, and after receiving public input, valuations will be finalized for submission to the Department of Revenue the 1st of November. The third quarter tax bills reflecting the final FY25 valuations, tax rate, and annual tax calculations are mailed the end of December. The extent to which first and second quarter tax payments have been overstated will result in lower third and fourth quarter tax payment amounts. It should be noted that most mortgage escrow departments do not adjust monthly tax escrow payments until the actual tax for the fiscal year are known. In the unlikely event that property owners receive a lender's notice of increased escrow payments, our office stands ready to provide an explanatory letter. Property owners responsible for the direct payment of taxes and for whom the temporary higher preliminary tax amount presents a burden, may contact the assessor's office prior to making payment for an adjusted tax amount. Interest charges that accrue on the difference between the billed amount and the adjusted amount or adjusted payment recommended by our office will be borne by RRG. I want to personally apologize for the stress this era has caused affected taxpayers. Know that the error was unintentional, a simple oversight with obvious dramatic consequences. Regretfully, I, it took time to identify the source of the problem, and please grant us your forgiveness. Committed to work, working towards a positive solution, Gerald. Gerald Shield, CEO of Regional Tax Assessor for Regional Resource Group.
I appreciate the letter.
Yes, Maureen.
So I do appreciate the letter. I think it, it's representative of what must have happened. However, on the July 12th meeting of the assessors, this wasn't brought up. It was, it was the neighborhood, and the calculation was really talking about, it was the neighborhood rate and all of that. Like, so that just, it feels off for, for me, between what the resolution is, which is completely understandable and acceptable, and that, and the position that was taken by the assessor, not the Board of Assessor, the assessor during that meeting. I just wanted to be noted that from watching that, and I know you guys were in attendance, and I watched it from home, that was not the message I was getting. The message I was getting was, this is what it is, not that there is the possibility of a problem. So just wanted to have that noted in the record.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That's kind of what bothered me about it, too, is that it was like, if people hadn't had a problem with it, if they hadn't made it a stink, I don't know if it would have been changed or resolved. They may have noticed it, so you can't lump that on them. I think it was a really good letter. It explained the issue, which completely makes sense. Everybody makes mistakes. They're owning it by paying and covering that difference. I don't know. I think it's a nice letter, but like you said, if it...
It just feels a little off, having two explanations, but this makes complete and utter sense, and in my mind, they're doing exactly the right thing, what the people of Lakeville have asked of them, what we have individually reached out and asked for and been concerned with. But it is more than unfortunate of the hardship that this has put on people, just emotional hardship as well. And, you know, it, you know, we will commit to having better processes going forward, all of us, as we learn from any mistakes or misses from, from what's going on in various boards and committees, you know, to, to learn from it and move forward.
Brian?
Yeah, not to repeat what's already been said, but given the, you know, the situation, I appreciate, even though it may have taken a little longer, you know, some ownership and, and action, I think, one of the things I was discussing behind the scenes when this first came out is like, how are there no immediate red flags that say, oh, these are drastically different? Even though we feel our work is correct, how is it drastically different? And just to relay a similar story, I had a family member in another town years ago that received their tax bill, and when they opened it up, their square footage had doubled and their number of bathrooms had gone to zero. So like, apparently, this isn't like a unique thing to Lakeville, like these weird new tax bills come out, like, but there must be something that we and others can do in this process to, to say, before these go out...
Export it. Take a look. And I can see where we were last, last year versus this year.
Right, there's got to be some anomaly here that says, hey, this warrants further review before we get too far down the road. I'm glad to see, I was very concerned about the folks, not just the ones that already pay, but the ones also on escrow payments, because I was afraid they'd have six months of extra payments coming out, so I'm glad to see he's clarified how that works a bit.
Yeah, me, too.
So really, I hope we learn from this and we implement, or the Board of Assessors implement, something that's a little clearer.
And I believe that that was their, their intention, that they would absolutely be looking at, you know, their process and procedures to make sure that they can capture any of these anomalies.
Yeah, because for that board, I did see that that wasn't part of the assessor's, per se, duty is to, to catch those.
Right.
That should be a policy going forward, similar to, I think it was the, the town of Wellesley had a really straightforward policy document where they just step out, you know, what it is that happens as far as the communication, and if there's a deviation and, and all of those things. So something similar to that would have really gone a long way to catch this type of issue four, five months ago.
Sure.
I, yeah?
Yeah.
So all that being said, there was a couple of us, right, Bob? That have been just, were all over it. We were saying, you know... So, you know, when you join boards, especially the Board of Assessors, the Board of Assessors, you have to pass a, you know, certification, licensing exam. It's, it's a lot of information. You have to be able to do the entire charity sheet yourself. You have to, you know, you know so much, so... Not wanting to cause even more problems, you know, some folks didn't want to say, this is a mistake, but some of us worked, you know, towards trying to figure that out, just because of, you know, I have been certified and everything. And sometimes the best thing you can do is, it's hard to say what's the right thing, but the right thing, I had advised a few folks to reach out to local services, which is part of the DOR, Division of Revenue, Department of Revenue. So by the time we had reached out to the Department of Revenue, they were already notified and they were on it. So, again, you know, the things I was worried about was, first of all, the tax bills, the increases. I wanted to make sure the Department of Revenue was involved, which they were, because they are like our system of checks and balances, which I always say, we need that. The escrow issues, which also, I think, our treasurer, Erica Crea, told us that it's pretty much down to a couple of big companies that do most of the escrow. So she checked with them, too, early on for me, and they said that they usually don't make changes until the annual, the actual bill comes out, so that was good. One of my concerns, and I had expressed this to, you know, some of the assessors, was that we hadn't heard from Gerald, who's the principal of the company, and, and I, you know, you try to stay in your lane sometimes, but had I known how long it might take to hear from him, maybe Bob and I would have been calling him sooner, you know? So I don't know if it was a mistake that they felt like they could fix, but, you know, I think it took a little while for him to respond. I can't begin to say whether, when he found out from his own folks that there was an error or not, but that's a lesson learned to me. I do appreciate, you know, them offering to, which was just a late happening at the meeting last week, but I personally still have questions on, you know, like, the reduction of the classifications went from seven classifications down to three. I mean, you know, there's some things the Board of Assessors can decide, and then there's some things they can't, which they have to go by state law. So how much of a difference does reducing those classifications from seven down to three make? I don't know. But, you know, Bob, if you have to have a meeting with Gerald, me and John, so I can ask all my questions, I would, you know, I would, I would appreciate that. And then certainly what everyone else said about, you know, making sure we find a way to make sure this doesn't happen again.
Well, I think if the questions, you know, do pursue, I think the rest of us, because I think it's important, because some of us, you know, are still getting more acclimated as to the process. I learned a lot through this era situation, but I think that information that's, you know, shared should be shared to all.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Nunes?
If I may, the Department of Revenue reached out at the end of last week, requesting a meeting. So this morning, the Treasurer Collector, the Chairman of the Board of Assessors, myself, met with the Chief of the Bureau of Local Assessment and Counsel for the Department of, Division of Local Services. And we talked about, obviously, the situation. We talked about our interaction with Munis, and if we were to make adjustments with Munis, what the potential, what the potential impact would be. So we talked about a number of things. They asked that we revisit the issue with Munis, which is our financial software. So we're hoping to have that meeting early next week, and then report back to the Department of Revenue. So this issue is still ongoing. We'll be working with RRG, Munis, and hopefully we'll be able to put light on this issue again, and maybe make some further adjustments that which will be beneficial to the taxpayers. Not promising anything, but we, we're going to see what we can do to continue that discussion. We have had initial discussions in Munis, which we view the chairman was involved with. It's potential roadblocks, but we'll see, we'll see what we can do and hopefully rectify the situation without having a negative impact on the recap sheet, which is a concern, obviously of all of us.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We're revisiting the discussion? Excuse me. Yes? Yes, Mr. Lakehammer. Come up to the mic, please.
Mr. Lakehammer, 32 Old Pot House Road. This is, of course, very disturbing to everybody. It's not just the waterfront property. They got hammered, okay? But other people got affected, you know, as well. So valuations were changed. So valuations were changed for the whole town. Is that correct? Everybody. Everybody's just, the valuation went up.
Yeah.
Right?
As far as I know, but the, this particular issue affected just over, I believe, two hundred um.
Right, but my point is, is that it's affecting all the taxpayers. It's not just affecting the waterfront people, which, you know, is, is, anybody that looked at it would say, my God, this can't be right.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, I think what Rich, you're referring to is they used the new valuations on the actual tax bill, and I'm not sure that that's the way that's supposed to go.
Which is the exact point. We have never used any increase in any evaluations for the preliminary tax bills. So why they went ahead and did that, I don't know. But, so you mentioned the people that have escrow. That's great for the people that have escrow, but the people that don't have escrow and don't have mortgages, which is a lot of seniors, are paying more than they have to.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and it's just not fair, you know, for them, you know, as well. So this should have been caught, because the assessed valuation went up million, hundreds of millions of dollars. And it should have been very obvious that there was a problem, you know, with the assessed values totally for the town. So I would like to know, are the new assessed values supposed to go out on preliminary tax bills or not? I'm told they're not.
Well, that would be a good question to ask the, the Board of Assessors.
Well, I just think it's not.
I don't believe it is.
It's not. It's not supposed to. So that, that never should have happened at all for anybody, but it's affecting everybody, including the, maybe your assessment, my mind went up a thousand dollars, you know, okay, so okay. I understand my assessment went up, but by that much, I don't think so. So the whole process, you know, should have been checked by the Board of Assessors and by a whole.
Right.
And, and it wasn't done.
Right.
And it's affected a lot of people, you know, a lot of people's pocketbooks. In the meantime, between now and the next payment, not, not November, not, not November's payment, February's payment, in between there, you know, they got to pay that or they're going to be charged and so forth and so on, so. It's, it's completely wrong. They were handled very, very poorly, and I'm very shocked and disappointed of the Board of Assessors and the company that, that did this. And it's not like they've been, they've been around for years, you know, they should have known that. He should have looked at it. He should have verified, and the bills never should have gone out the way they were.
Well, I, that's why it's so important to have a policy in place for them to look at it after it's been done and to validate it and to ensure.
Right.
And to communicate, like all, all of the steps.
Yep.
Just every single one was kind of missed on the way.
I saw, this was a big miss.
Um, I think, I believe I'm remembering correctly, because I asked that question, I said, how would you see this and not know? And I believe Chairman Oliveri stated that they didn't have a chance to see the preliminary bills before they were mailed out. And I said, okay, well, that, you know, seems like something that should be fixed. And I think that was a consensus that was reached, because they shouldn't have gone out. So I think that is a step going forward, that they are going to make that change.
That's what I understood from watching the last meeting.
Where they see it first.
That would be the, the, another new process that they would add on to their existing one. Um, other towns do do that regularly, based on, you know, the data. I just went and looked at for their assessing and their reeval process that they do. Um, you know, everyone checks it out. Everyone signs off on it.
Yes, Brian?
Uh, I just was trying to find it. Back when we finally got the letter from D L S, Department of Local Services, they estimated, I'm not saying this is accurate or not, but to their estimation, it was four hundred parcels of properties that were affected by the wrong usage. So I don't want to say that it was everybody in town, but at least the four hundred or so that they see.
Yeah, it was four hundred affected and two, two hundred were incorrect.
Two hundred on water.
It's only two hundred, not four hundred.
Yeah, but four hundred were involved in the process.
Number in there that's correct, but not blanket the whole town.
But that's what the letter said.
Yeah, thankfully it didn't say that.
Yeah.
Yep. So I'm putting a lot of faith in Bob to stick with this.
I know about that.
And I'm here to help if you need help.
I know about that.
Here you all are.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, we're revisiting a discussion regarding uh the disposition of town-owned property located at MAP, the zero, uh, zero forty-two block, the zero twelve, and lot zero fifteen A, also known as Zero Cherry Street. Um, so we had a, had a butter request, um, that was, uh, they were interested in the purchasing of the property. Uh, it came in front of this board. Uh, the board voted uh the purchase price based on some analysis that had been done, and the price was eight thousand dollars. The butter had come back to the board stating that there was some cleanup that may need to be done, um, and if we would consider um reducing that purchase price. And um so Mr. Nunes, um, I know was uh working closely with our resident of Butter. And our D P W had gone and inspected the property and provided an email of his findings. And he just uh basically says here um that the property is in relatively good shape. Half of the property consists of healthy wooded area. The other half is a driveway and grass area, which is currently uh being used by the owner at Five Cherry Street. So um, this board.
Madam Chair, is Five Cherry Street the parcel that's buying it? I just wanted to make sure.
Clarify that.
Yes.
Yeah, yes. So what's in front of the board this evening is our consideration, um, based on the information presented. If we um would like to entertain reducing the uh purchase price that we had voted on. So, entertain any discussion?
Uh, I had a chance to talk to the D P W Director again today, and he said exactly the same thing. Looks like half of it is already being used by the person that's interested, and the other half is trees and shrubbery and such. Um, thankfully it was not oil drums or anything that people had dumped on it. Um, it was relatively clean. It was just more greenery than anything else.
Yeah.
Me personally, I feel the price that we already set was fair. It was kind of between the evaluations that we had gotten. And obviously, the state of that parcel has pretty much been the same for the last few years while they were interested in it.
Thank you.
Yes, Brian. And same comments, um, it, the parcel is in good condition. Trees, I don't consider to be a nuisance or anything like that, or, you know, there's no tire dump. There's no oil spill. Uh, looks like the town was a good steward of the property while it was in its possession. I think uh the price that it's at is fair and reasonable.
Brenna Leah, anything?
Um, that we had gotten the appraisal, right?
We had, I think there was.
Yeah, that's who I'm trying to find.
Two or three.
I think it's two, I believe. I think it was six thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand, and they said that the appropriate value was eight thousand, or the average was around there.
It sounds familiar.
How big is it? Can you remember?
It says uh on a, mm, on, from the Treasurer Collector on June eleventh, it says, I received two appraisals for the Cherry Street parcel. One appraised it at fifty-eight hundred, uh, another one appraised it up to ten thousand to the right neighbor, so. So the Assessor's Office has it assessed at ten thousand eight hundred. So I think that's how we came to the eight thousand.
Madam Chair, to, to answer Member Donnie's question, it is point one oh three acres, which is the same size as Five Cherry Street. They're exactly the same size. So it would basically be doubling the property.
Okay, so um, do we even make a motion, or do we just let it stand?
To the board.
We already approved that, right?
Right, huh?
Yep.
So there will be no action and we'll just, if we can respond to our resident and just let them know that, you know, after, um, you know, reviewing this, um, that we would like to stand with our purchase price set.
Yeah, I mean, you know, in the letter it says, you know, there's an option for the town to remove the trees. I don't see that. That's our responsibility, actually.
Uh, Madam Chair, the D P W Director did indicate that the size of the trees that are there right now are big enough where we would contract out anyways, so we would actually have to pay to take those down.
That's good information. Thank you. Okay. Yes.
It's a non-developable lot, that it's going to be connected to the existing lot that they own. Um, so they can't develop it.
If I can, I know um, we talked about this before. Hmm, Mr. Darling is in the audience, and I know that you had referenced that before, because you have a history, and I hate to call you out, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
I can be grounded afterwards, but um, because you had been working um with this or have been aware of this property for a long time and why it had been separated in the first place. So um, the deed itself?
Yes, so, so when the property was acquired um, uh, from the previous owner um by the town of Lakeville, um, it should have never been purchased. It was uh already merged with the adjacent parcel, which is number five. So I had made a recommendation uh to Erica, and I, and I believe this board, that um we make sure that we put that in the purchase and sale, uh, that the property is to be held in common ownership and not to be disposed of separately. So it's a very valid point and, and it should be done.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I would, I would have concerns over what we determined to be developed though, since the neighbor did indicate that they might have, since having a child, the idea of expanding these sixty homes. So if it conforms with the zoning, I wouldn't want to restrict them from what they can or can't do.
So it would be only um, third-party disposition where you're giving it to, you know, the land uh to somebody else. It would be my assumption that the same rights um authorized by any residential use in the town could remain. So an accessory structure, uh, septic system, um repairs or expansion, um addition on the house deck, that kind of thing. Um, that would be typically allowed in a residential district. So we would only be limiting um, uh, subsequent separation of this Zero Cherry Street.
Makes sense.
Did you, before you leave, did you say that land was supposed to be in the deed of the other parcel?
Yes, so, so I touched on that a little bit at one of um the previous meetings. Um, when land held in common ownership, um, that's not um, uh compliant with today's zoning, um, those parcels merge. So this was an instance where you had uh two five thousand uh square foot parcels that were originally developed by New England Acres uh back in the early sixties prior to, um, well, actually late, late fifties, uh, prior to Lakeville adopting uh zoning. So the then um laws, uh statutory laws for pre-existing non-conforming properties that are grandfathered five thousand square feet and fifty feet of frontage. Uh, both of these parcels had that, but when they came in common ownership and purchased together, um, they merged and became one lot. Um, the town has always viewed those as one lot. As far as um septic expansion, there was actually a garage on uh Zero Cherry Street that was painted the same color and used in conjunction um with the Five Cherry Street parcel. Um, there was uh this uh idea that we were going to create um water infrastructure uh in the Clockshores area and that this property would be acquired if needed for a pump station to elevate pressures in the water system. Um, with technology advancements, there are, is only the uh one pump station that's required on Nook Street. Um, it's enough to, to feed the entire property, so this is, this is no longer needed by the time.
So are they kind of buying back their own land?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a different owner. Um, so the, the folks that we uh purchased the property from subsequently sold that, and then I believe it was taken in foreclosure at one point, and then somebody else um bought it. So this is the right thing to do in this situation. We've talked about disposi- uh disposing of land previously, where there's certain instances where we wouldn't necessarily want to auction them when they're land of low value. Um, if we were just to auction this and somebody came in, um, for example, and, and decided they were going to, we've had this before, uh, put a travel trailer on there, and uh travel trailers are not governed under local zoning, um, because they're registered um vehicles and, and they're governed by um, uh, the R M V or uh Mastod. So this, this is going to make things better and resolve um a problem that we created.
Nate, it's called a merger doctrine, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. It's a common, common law.
Thank you.
What if we took off a thousand dollars? Seven is a lucky number, and this is an odd situation. The town had plenty of time to do something with it. Would this help them out?
You can make a motion.
Okay, I'll make that motion. I make a motion to reduce the purchase price to seven thousand dollars. Also, where does the money go? Sorry, that's not my motion. That's just a general question.
There's a motion? Second? Well, the motion doesn't carry.
Okay. Where does the money go?
The general fund receipt.
Okay.
Um, I've had a request um to move something out of order. Um, so if the board will entertain me on that, I'd like to jump down to Agenda Item number twenty-three. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we had um some vacancies on some of the committees. Um, and we've had some movement, um, which had left some um openings on the Community Preservation Committee. So uh we had put out a request uh for anybody that was interested um in serving as a member at large, uh, to please submit their letters of interest. So this evening, we have received two letters of interest. So I know you guys are out there, you know, getting excited about joining some of these sports committees and commissions, because the letters are coming in. Uh, and um it's Noel Verlou and Robert Stephanion. Um, and the letters are attached here. So uh this appointment um will expire on July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. So it's a three-year um term. So did everybody have a, an opportunity to read the letters?
Yes.
Okay. Um, both candidates, um, from what, you know, I can see are very um connected to their community. Um, and obviously have shown interest uh by submitting their letter. And um, I believe what I saw here, Stephen even, this is his second request um to be served on this committee. So um I believe Noel is here in attendance. Um, I, I've got word that Stephen was unavailable um to attend this evening uh due to short notice. So um, I'll entertain whatever the board is interested in doing.
One motion or separate motions?
Just for clarification, is there one spot?
It's one spot. It's one, it's one spot. It's one spot, yeah.
It's been so long since we've had competition that.
Right?
It's confused, because we have interest.
Um, so this is our, uh, we're going into our third year, uh, I believe with our, our C P C. Um, it's hard to believe that it's been this long. Go ahead, Brian.
Nobody likes doing these first.
No, I know.
Um, you're both, both excellent community members. It's nice to see that there is interest in this one. Uh, I would make a motion to appoint Robert Stephanion, given that he has um showed interest in the past. Shows interest again, and um I think some of his uh historical experience at the state level would be important as well, as he's pretty good at reading rules and regulations and such, and was at town meeting the one that brought up the one million dollars for a long bond that nobody tapped into. I think he'd bring a, a unique set of diversity skills to the, the group.
Did, did you make a motion?
Yes.
Oh, with a motion? I hear a second.
Second?
There's a second. Any further discussion? This is always very difficult. Um, you know, I think either candidate is excellent. Oh, not hearing any discussion. Um, I guess I'll, I will call this uh to vote. Roll, please. Baby and I.
Donnie, you abstain.
Um, Carbonee I.
Candy Donae.
They are.
Okay, so it would be number one. So three to one.
Three to one.
So the motion carries. Okay. All right, okay. Thank you, Noel. Thank you. Um, I did have one other thing I would like to move out of order, if I may. Um, Agenda item nineteen. We have received a memo from our Director of Inspeccional Services in regards to this. So we have in front of us this letter for receiving a retirement letter from our conservation agent. So I'd like to invite Mr. Darling up to the table.
Yeah, I'll touch on this a little bit. So there's gonna be a time in all of our lives that we decide it's time to kind of step back a little bit and enjoy our lives and at this time, Bob's there. And so it's sad for me because I look at Bob, he's kind of like the patriarch of our family. He's the go-to. Joke around with him all the time. He's the only person that I've ever walked by and I always have this feeling to give him a hug. He's like the Santa Claus. So it is tough for me, you know, to accept his resignation. I did that. I wrote this memo on his behalf. Because of his historic knowledge and his understanding of the Wetland Protection Act and water quality and geology. I'd really like to, you know, reassign him to a deputy or, you know, an alternate position to help onboard whoever we hire. Again, to make sure we preserve historic knowledge. I think that's something this town's missed over the years. You know, as we transition, our succession plan should be making sure that we do exit interviews and try to gather as much of that historic knowledge as we can so we don't see this redundancy in efforts that we often see. You know, you see a new board of select, a select board come in or a new town administrator and you see the same old arguments, you know, come in and say, hey, what about this or what about that? So I would like to, I would like to see if we can reassign him to another position. But I can't really say much more about that than Bob. You know, we all love him and we're gonna be really sad when he goes permanently, but I'm gonna try to hold on a little longer. That's all I really have.
It's been amazing, you know, serving with him. I know I worked closely with him on quite a few different projects and just the wealth of knowledge and passion and calmness when sharing information. I know that I have captured some of that, you know, in the work that I try to perform every day, so.
What I enjoy most about Bob is that any time I just felt like hanging out in his office, just walking around, looking at everything he had, maps, pictures. And, you know, those are incredible stories of years of dedication to the community. Bob's a great guy.
And he's protected us.
Yeah.
I agree. Knowledgeable, even-tempered, never favored or disfavored anyone. Always tried to be equally applicable and make sure everything is fair. So always appreciated watching him, not going up the stairs, but watching him as he passed by up the stairs and having that good conversation every day. He's a wealth of knowledge. And I do agree with Nate that keeping him on even in a limited capacity is a benefit for both him and the town.
If I can real quick, Madam Chair, I would also, for those who haven't met her yet, I'd like to introduce his wonderful daughter, Michelle Bouchard. So I'm seeing the next generation. You don't have to come on, Michelle. I just wanted to point you out because we all respect you as well and we thank you for sharing your dad with us.
Michelle, you serve on our conservation commission right now. It's a family business.
And touching on that, if I may, I'm happy to see he intends to continue with conservation commission. That's great. And your plan of having, you know, transition and making sure we don't lose that institutional knowledge is huge. Too often we do. So if he's willing to help out, I think we find the right role.
Thank you. And I don't believe there's any need to vote on this. I've accepted the resignation, so.
Because I think we don't want to receive it.
No.
Okay, I think we can go back in order. Eight. All right, so we're back on eight. Okay, so we have a company that has been providing a video for us at no cost for the town's website. They're looking to update the video and they're looking to do the weekend of October 4th and 5th when the Arts Festival is happening. I believe they've gotten some pretty good footage of that in the past. So their topics are highlighted on the next page and if there's anything after reviewing this that you wanted to have them, you know, kind of highlight, then.
Madam Chair, I was curious, do we know the last time they refreshed this was?
2019? Yeah, I believe so.
I wasn't sure how to weigh in, how much has changed since they last did it?
Yeah, ladies night, same. Yeah, they came in and they were up on, they did the crane, didn't they? Yeah, they did the crane and they did the overview and all that. But, yeah, they were very responsive to any requests the last time. I guess the only thing that I would like to see is maybe a little bit more focus on the parks and recreation. You know, as we've done some contributions to their improvements and they're beginning to have more and more activity. So that would be one I would like to just see added on there.
I would have them cover history. Lakeville has a lot of native history and it also ties in with Ted Williams Park. You have history through there.
And we've done a number of municipal service short videos over the last couple of years that might be covered to some degree. Green Initiatives, there's been a lot of projects through green communities over the years that maybe we could touch on.
Okay, well, you can pick four. So we've got history. We can each pick four? I think we can. Rude. I know. And the parks and recreation, did you say the green initiatives, Brian?
Yeah, without exactly knowing how they define it, that was just my quick thought on.
I would like to see something about right to farm or CPA because I think those are important steps forward for the town.
Madam Chair, in picking these, you need to have something to actually film. So, you know, like, I don't know what we would film for green initiatives, maybe an outside.
School.
The school, but.
We've got tons of capital projects that have taken place through green communities, so.
So, yeah, we just have to keep that in mind, that we need to actually have things that they can go up and film.
I assume we'll get an opportunity, or somebody will get an opportunity to speak with these people and say, we're thinking these topics, what do you need to have a good production? And then hopefully they give us a homework list of, do you have this, this, this?
Well, we can, we can, right now, designate somebody from the select board to.
I think Brenna would be fantastic at this.
Thank you.
I second the nomination. Unofficial vote? Coming your way.
I mean, we all saw our presentation for the golf course years ago, so I think she can definitely help here.
Okay, nice. All right. Leah, do you have something that's of interest to you that you would like to see?
Nope, you guys pretty much covered it all.
All right. Excellent. So Brenna, this was yours.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Yes, to be put on the agenda here, we have discussed possible vote on regarding unregistered vehicle complaint from 160, 416 Bedford Street. So this evening, we are going to focus on this complaint and offer a decision. So we have the complaint here and we have our bylaw with regards to unregistered vehicles. So I have as a note here, the zoning enforcement officer has performed a site visit and observed more unregistered vehicles than allowed in the bylaw, which we have in front of us. So. Anybody like to chime in on this?
My first question, Madam Chair, would be just to confirm that they've not applied and received the necessary permit per the bylaw.
Okay.
So.
What is that?
So the bylaw does stipulate that you can apply to the select board for a permit. I'm just confirming that this property has not done so? I'm not aware of one?
They have not.
Okay.
Comes through the select board office.
Okay.
Yeah, I also asked the clerk's office to look for any kind of licenses or permits or whatever have been issued there. As of Friday, they still hadn't found anything. Like for businesses or anything like that.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
This is a relatively new bylaw, correct? Have we had something come across our?
Yeah, previously, yes.
Do we usually issue a warning first?
Usually, yes. Once the complaint has come in and it's been verified, we send a letter to the property owners telling them that they're in violation and give them a time period to contact the office to discuss a plan of action.
And have we done that yet? Is this what we're doing right now?
We're doing right now.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I have been out there and I've taken a look and there's definitely lots and lots of vehicles there. So some of the vehicles are, I would, they're not drivable. They're not, I'm not quite sure what, what, and I don't want to really get into trying to figure out what's going on. But because of what I saw, I think I'd just like to make a motion, if that's all right with you.
Anybody on this board can?
Make a motion. All right. So I move that the select board order the owner of the property located at 160 Bedford Street to remove all the unregistered and uninsured vehicles and ungaraged as per the bylaw. Located on said property within 21 days of this order because such vehicles are prohibited by Chapter 251 of the town's general bylaws or provide the town with proof of registration and insurance of those vehicles within 21 days. And further, to warn the owner that the town will take enforcement action if these deadlines are not met, which may include the assessment of fines at a rate of up to $300 per day until compliance is achieved as per the bylaw as well.
Couple things. There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. That's a very specific motion, Leah. When did you go to law school, like last week?
Well, I sent a draft to Greg Corbo, but Greg Corbo helped us, Bob and I, work on it because we, you know, I just feel like we need to do something.
So that's really specific for a letter to the property owner of the violation. Is that in keeping with what we've sent before, like that? No?
Are we in discussion at this point?
We're in discussion, just discussion. We have a motion and a second, so we're in the discussion on the motion information-wise. Do you have something that we've sent before, Tracy, that you?
The motion is written so that if, in fact, any of those vehicles are registered and insured, they have the option to prove that. Because it gives the "or" part in here, or to provide the town with proof of registration and insurance.
I would respectfully suggest that that sounds like we're skipping due process to some degree here, given that this is the first time it's come before this board. And I think a warning is absolutely necessary. And I know we're not talking about the front lot where marijuana companies correctly leasing land for parking. It's one way out back. But I think at least we should suggest, you know, a letter through interim town administrator, whether or not it makes sense to have Chief Perkins assign somebody to check these out and run VINS and whatnot and confirm, or just lack of registration or not. Because they do have the ability to apply. And if this is the first time they've seen the bylaw, they might say, oh, okay, well, I have another option here.
Madam Chair, please. I do have a letter that we sent in 2002 and it's probably the latest one we sent. We don't do many of these. Basically said it has been prior to the attention of the board of selectmen by resident that more than one unregistered motor vehicle is being stored on the above-captured property, which is under your control. This is a violation of a town bylaw regarding the storage of such vehicles. I've enclosed a copy of the bylaw for your review. Please call me at 946-8803 so that we may discuss the situation and Rita Gob at town administrator.
Okay.
So if I may, just, I just don't want to lose my train of thought. So in speaking with Captain Joyce, it would totally be voluntary. They just can't go onto someone's property and just start. They could just say to them, you know, please don't be on my property and they would have to leave, so. There's already been a couple of police calls to this property. So for cars? Just questioning certain things.
Talk about cars?
That's just cars.
Yeah, about the cars.
Where does the $300 per day come from?
That's.
It's the third offense, right?
Fines for the third offense.
Not to exceed, yeah.
Yeah, that's, the first offense is 100, but.
Yeah, because it says fines at a rate of up to 300 per day. So it doesn't mean we have to.
Mine's like cut off.
Maybe it's cut off, yeah.
Can we introduce some pictures, since you guys haven't seen them? They have a lot of experience. They live right next door to it. And there's multiple, multiple issues going on. And I'd like to have a chance to talk and explain to you what's going on.
Right now, the board is still trying to flush this out, but give me a minute.
Well, I have some information, though. I'll get flushed out. And they're big pictures.
I think it should be the town gathering the information. I think it should be the town gathering the information directly.
So Tracy, I have a question for you. When this letter goes out to, because back in 2002, to the town administrator and the town administrator would talk to, is there any? Did it come back to the board for further? Do you know? Do you remember?
It was 22 years ago, so.
Tracy!
I know. I could look at the minutes to see if anything popped up after that. But typically, the office, the town administrator would work on it with. We did have, Nate, correctly from around, we did have an issue with Sal Cucci Notti at one time and Nate worked with Sal to get the situation cleaned up.
Okay. So, I mean, according to, other than that letter saying, you know, please call me, signed Rita, I'm not really sure how different that is from what we have doing here.
I just think the language that's represented in your motion seems like for a first conversation from the town, it seems like, I think Brian said, it's like it feels like it's stepping over something a little bit as opposed to giving them the chance to address it without a fine or, you know, just knowing what the bylaw is, giving them the copy of the bylaw and being able to, I don't know, try to foster a positive interaction. But I do understand your point completely that it's a serious matter. If I can, Nate?
Yeah, just wanted to take the time to kind of go over this a little more. So the property was cited for unregistered, ungaraged vehicles a number of years ago, six or seven years ago. They were provided with the bylaw section, yeah, through me.
Same owner?
No, it's a different, yeah, different owner, which is a valid point. But I will say that in over a decade of doing this, I've taken on a lot of the one or two extra, you know, unregistered motor vehicles on residential properties. They've never gone to fine. People just either register them or, you know, put them in a garage and get rid of them. I'm counting anywhere between 30 and 50 at this location. I'm counting anywhere between 30 and 50 at this location. It's a, it's a, probably one of the most egregious possible violations of this bylaw that I've seen. I think that the motion that, that Leah made, giving the 21 days to, to make corrections, I don't think that would preclude the board for amending that letter. If in fact they got rid of, you know, 50% of them within that 21 days, it's possible that this board could reconsider fines. But the way you're giving 21 days is, is really a warning before fines take place. Like I said, thi- this one, this one is, is probably the biggest, you know, the issue, R and V doesn't take plates back and I can't run VINs. So, you know, I'm basing it on, you know, many of the vehicles can't be driven. So I'm assuming they're either wrecked from somewhere, they used for storage. I find no evidence of them being sold on-site, but there's a lot there. So, you know, we're also starting to consider environmental impacts. Conservation will be hearing this tomorrow night. Their violation was easily seen and quickly addressed. Mine from a zoning perspective, and I won't get too deep into that. There's some anomalies, actually three different iterations of a business to residential zoning line that will completely have a, a impact as far as enforcement goes. So, as Brian mentioned, I mean, this is permissible activity through the select board in a business district, but I have evidence that shows that it's a residential district. And then I have evidence that shows the residential line is actually further to the east. And then there's also evidence that would show the business district stretches almost a clear pond road. So, as with any violation, we first should identify what the zone is. So this board, I don't believe at this point could even entertain a license for these extra unregistered vehicles there, because they wouldn't be appropriate in a residential district. But at least this letter is a starting point to start getting some cleanup and, I mean, conservation is, is going to be, like I said, hearing it tomorrow night.
Madam Chair, if we have questions over the zoning, to turn this the other way. It may not be a viable use in a residential district, but it may be a viable use in a business district, to which they would be, from this bylaw, allowed to apply, and we can decide yes or, yes or no, whatever that would turn into. So it feels like we're almost at a stalemate, if we don't even know what zoning that parcel is.
To some extent, you're absolutely right, because even there's a buffering zone. So if the residential district lies where our current map shows that it lies, then there would be additional buffering and they couldn't park the vehicles anyway, because you'd be a business abutting a residential district, and that requires additional, additional noise and visual buffering, plantings and those type of things. So, you got a valid point, I mean, that's, that's why this has taken so long, you know, just to even get here. I was going to be responding back to you with the number of vehicles and, and what enforcement action I would be taking, but we're looking at a 1959 bylaw that says land owned by W. Wilkie at the time of the adoption of this bylaw. The subsequent zoning maps show a straight line down the length of Clear Pond Road. And then somehow, I'm guessing, well, I'm not guessing, we're seeing it in somewhere in the mid 80s, all of a sudden make a zigzag out around Windsway, which is just not, we never had a zoning bylaw to change that. So we, we need to figure out where the zoning is, but whether it's business or residential at this point. I think the cars need to go, and if they wanted to apply to the, you know, select board for a license, they can bring them back in if the, you know, select board would entertain a license. But the, the vehicles, many of them are in such disrepair, they're, they're quite possibly leaking fluids and that type of stuff. And there's open violations with conservation already as it is. So, I, I would recommend that, that this board does take action. Starts that process moving, and even if we can get half the vehicles off there, we would give us time. I'm going to have to hire, you know, we're going to have to get KP Law and probably engineer involved in, in helping map this district.
So we don't have a final, like, so in your estimation, there's roughly 30 vehicles out there?
At minimum. Thirty to 50.
I think 50 in a month. So I had, yeah. I had asked Mr. Winn just to send me some pictures he has, so I guess to Brian's point, I guess I was looking for information, so I don't know if that sways you in looking at what he has. I have them on my phone. But I just feel like. I can't, I haven't searched the clerk's office myself, I can't find business records, I'm not quite sure, you know, there were folks walking around the property, looked like they were working on cars, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know what a less.
Can I explain the police report? I might be able to give that to you, give you a better idea of what's going on.
Chris, please just hold, we're just finishing our discussion here. So I'm, you know, I received this, and I have to say that, you know, there's a lot more information that's been gathered than what I had sitting here to make this decision this evening. So, I mean, some of the reason, sorry, Lauren, we didn't bring some of the, is because I don't, this meeting isn't for us to talk about zoning or conservation, or that's why I was trying to keep.
It is just about the vehicles.
Right.
Which could zoning has an impact on, if it is a business district, then they would be able to apply for a permit.
One that they haven't applied for already, which is obviously.
I'm not, I'm not arguing one way or the other, but due process is due process, no matter what side somebody's on.
So we do have a recommendation, you know, to pursue this morning. So the question is, is the motion that had been presented. Harder than you would want it to be as a first interaction regarding the, the issue?
Madam Chair, my concern is not that it, maybe it's harder at this point, is that it's impossible at this point for the amount of cars, if, that this is true. I, I don't want to set people up to fail, I want them to comply. That's the goal, it's not to set them up to say, here's this unattainable goal, oh, you, you didn't get it, here's your fine. I want to, I want to gain them to, for like you said, Leah, to, to do the right thing and to, to move forward. So, I do like what Nate was saying about making it a staged goal. But at the same time, do I want to stage an environmental situation? Probably not.
No, and there's, you know, there's a history of not applying for permits. So.
And that's on this particular owner for the cars?
When were they first made aware of the bylaw's existence?
Of this, this bylaw? I don't know that they have. I don't have any information, I didn't have any information regarding this, it was.
Has anyone contacted after this complaint was received?
Not that I'm aware of, not the property owner. Because, because of the action regarding the general bylaws under the select board. In the past, we've had a better vehicle for delegating somebody to work on behalf of the select board. A lot of times Rita would come to me directly and say, hey Nate, can you, you know, can you handle this one? If I had time, I would. If I didn't, she would handle it. You know, the police department's been involved on special instances. And they, the chief's designated an officer to work with someone in town recently. There was a, a special situation. So this one, like I said, is far bigger than, than anything I've dealt with as far as somebody working with the select board on this because of my resources.
And I ask that because I would be interested to know how much, how many more cars have come in or how much more work has been done from June 14th to today? Because we're almost two months out. So, I feel like that should have been the time to do, to do something like this, where we're saying, you know, you got to stop it, when we received the complaint, so that we could follow up with the information. I honestly don't remember most of your motion, but I know that it was heavy-handed, so I think considering the extent of it, it might be appropriate. But like I said, I don't remember the full extent of it, I'm sorry.
So, go ahead. Oh, I'm just going to say.
Oh, yeah, same.
If it's limited in the scope.
Yeah, great. So I would like to invite you up to the table, but I'm, because I understand that there, you know, it's potentially from your indication that there might be some other issues.
No, there's lots of issues.
I want to keep this specifically.
I got you, I got you. Welcome, Madam Chair, board members. Bob Noons, the last time I saw him, he both had dark hair, and I used to call him Mayor Noons. We've been town residents for.
Tim and Tara Lynn.
Tim and Tara Lynn, I forgot that part. We've been residents in town for 23 years, taxpayers paying all our business. And rather recently Floyd Anderson came in and he started operating multiple businesses. And in these businesses, they were, they have already violated an order of condition on the Conservation Commission, they have a meeting.
We have to keep this.
Well, I was just trying to give you a backstory, so why don't I just show you some pictures and we'll just stick with that? And that way you can pass some pictures around. Nate has mentioned in 30 to 50, I'm thinking it's more closer to 100. So, and when the police came over on, I think it was last Thursday, August 1st, I got the police report today, and I called the officer and talked to him, and I said, well, what happened? And he said, when I got there, there was a generator running around 11 o'clock at night when we called. There were individuals in there passing cars between two 18-foot, you know, tractor trailers. And he asked them to shut the generator off, and then he proceeded to get a couple names, there was a bunch of them that couldn't speak English, and then he had a hard time really talking to them. And he got two names, one of them was in Paul Bunker Drive, do you know what I mean? And the activity that could be going on over there is anything, it, it could be anything. I have no idea what's in these tractor trailers. It's, 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 it's scary.
It's more than just unregistered cars, it's like tractor trailers, it's RVs, it's boats, it's whatever, shipping containers.
And they're shipping it supposedly through the police report, which I have today, they told them that they were gathering all this stuff and shipping it to Haiti. I don't know anything more, I can't go on the property, I'd get arrested for trespass, and I'm just relying on the information that I have and I can acquire. And these cars are coming in and out, they're doing a lot of work at night, in the middle of the night.
After business hours.
And the cars are moving, they're going in and out. So that tells me there is a business being run without a business license.
Without permits.
And that they've never required. They've owned this property, they've already violated a conservation thing, they haven't applied for any business licenses. They have different businesses there, you guys, they have problems with some of the other issues of like lug and fill out, the town is missing out on, I know, but the town's missing out on.
No, I understand that there's probably a lot more, but this board.
All right, so, so right now, safety is.
I have one, one question, if I may. Remember Fabian, you said that Mr. Winn had sent you pictures? When did you receive pictures?
Uh, this morning.
Okay, all right. Just for future, if there's ever an agenda item and somebody else, because that would have been very helpful to have had before I sat in this chair to, to discuss this tonight.
I thought I was going to be able to speak first before you had a motion, so I thought I was going to be able to explain this and show it to you. I went and did all my homework and wrote out a whole thing of everything that's going on. Because you guys should be aware, it's the gateway to our town.
No, I agree, I agree, and I appreciate you speaking up.
What's that?
I, no, I appreciate that you had brought this to our attention.
I mean, you guys should go check it out, it's our town.
Well, clearly, I have pictures that were in front of us that, that's not.
I'm not talking about like one or two trailers.
So, Madam Chair, just to echo, like, usually we have all our documentation ahead of time, so we can read up on it and do our own research and stuff.
Well, I started this process two months ago.
Two months ago, so we're new to how everything works.
I mean, I'm just trying to get answers, and I'm just trying to feel safe. We don't feel safe at home anymore.
Yeah.
No, I, I appreciate the photos, it helps.
Yes, it does illustrate things.
Yes, I appreciate the photos, yes.
Well, I just figured, I, I mean, I have all the documentation, I have the police reports, I have everything, and it's, if you read the police report, it's horrifying. It's like, these people are 150 feet away from my girls, what do we have to wait for someone to get hurt before we act? What's going on with these things? They're tractor trailers, they're shipping containers.
You have no idea what's in them, what they're doing in them.
People working at midnight, generators running at midnight, and nothing can be done, cops can't do anything.
You know, who knows what could be happening? There's a motion and there's a second, we've had discussion, is there any further discussion? We clearly know that there are more vehicles on the site than what, without a permit, just as is, there's more vehicles that should be allowed on there for our bylaw, so.
My, if I may, Madam Chair, I'm looking at our bylaw again, since mine's cut off the printout. I just, I don't know where the $300 per day comes from.
Here, do you want to see it?
I'm on our, I'm on our digital copy of it right now.
It says 251.
251 dash four point three.
I have.
First offense, $100, dot one, dot two, second offense, $200, third offense and subsequent offense, $300, doesn't say per day.
Point B, uh, point B, in any case, each day a violation shall constitute a separate offense.
So then we need to ask, what is, what is this separate offense? Is it the second car, or the third car, or the fourth car, or is it the 50 to 100 cars equal upon offense? Because that would be a much higher number if it was per vehicle.
The way the motion is written, it says at a rate of up to 300 per day. That would be the max.
And again, it's been 22 years since we've had one of these apparently, so I'm not shocked we don't have all the answers, yeah.
So based on the motion, based on those pictures, there's 21 days, that, that has, that would have to be cleared out.
I would just include in the letter the fact that, you know, should they include a copy of this, and should they want to, they can apply. I'm not saying anybody's going to prove it, but it needs to be made aware.
And. So that, I would like to make sure that they have a copy of our bylaw.
By 21 days?
I, that's what the attorney, I don't know if I wrote 21 and he followed my lead, no, I think I suggested 21 and he followed with 21. And actually, the attorney suggested my motion be more forceful, so that's why we went with a bit more forceful. Mine was. And moved that the select board send a letter asking to remove all the unregistered and insured vehicles on the property, or provide the town with proof within 21 days, and he suggested we be more forceful and gave, worked that one up. Okay, so 21 days to remove all unregistered, and so at the 21-day mark. Who goes out and says if we're, we're up?
That would be me.
That would be Nate.
Yeah, but to your point, do we, we have to verify that they're unregistered, or they have to prove it?
They have to prove it.
The burden of proof is on them, correct?
The burden of proof would be on them.
All right, so we don't need to involve any other departments?
Who is this letter going to? Because according to the assessor's database, it is J. H. Taylor Realty Corp. So is that, has anybody been in contact with whoever that is? Is that the right person to send it to?
Yeah, it would go to the owner of the property. Floyd Anderson.
I have a cell if you need that, you can call him.
Have either of you been in contact with the landowner?
Yes, he's, he's come up on our property a couple of times.
He showed up the first day I met with Nate, where I stopped at Nate's office, next thing you know, he was there.
Did you tell him about the bylaw?
Oh, he knows about it.
No, he's in violation of multiple things, we discussed it. But we're, we're the, the select board, and we are hearing, you know, not hearing this because it's not hearing, but receiving this and having to make a decision, we have to make sure that we have done our job to make sure that we have provided the bylaw.
Well, I've been with your zoning officer for two months, so, and I've given him all the information. I believe he's acquired a lot of information on his own, I'm trying to get as much information as I can. He's working on it, so I think in 60 days, it's kind of fair to think that we have an operation being run with no licenses, no one, no tax money, no nothing, and now we have safety involved, so I kind of hope someone doesn't get hurt before we make a decision.
So, 21 days, and then after that, if, if it's not adhered to, is it, you sure it's supposed to be Nate and not the law enforcement?
If anybody would delegate, I think.
So we would need to delegate. I would like to make sure that that is very clear.
I would have LPD follow up with them.
I'm sorry?
I said, I think I would have LPD follow up with them, like the police department. Seems more in their wheelhouse. Now, the, the question would be, what is, what are we determining as the date of offense, right? So is that going to be the date of the letter, or?
First offense can only be after the notification, so.
So for those 20, for those 21 days, are we counting 100, 200, 300, 300, 300? And at that end of 21 days, what is the, the fine structure potentially?
The way I'm reading it, and I could be reading it wrong, is the first offense is just $100.
Right.
And that's just for the whole shooting matter. And that's just for the whole shooting match, yeah. Um, however, to your point, we didn't, it doesn't expressly say uh, for each car, for each incident. I mean, that, it's a very gray bylaw, um.
Yeah.
So, I don't know that we can, we can do anything more than that hundred dolla, a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars.
Well, I mean, it does say each day of violation constitutes a separate offense, so.
That would be day twenty-two, day twenty-three, twenty-four.
That's fine, if that's what you wanna go by.
Yeah.
Just we need to be clear on-
That would be my understanding.
The second offense would be if, if they didn't meet the requirement, I would, if it came back in front of the board, then that would be.
Yeah, at day twenty-two.
Okay.
But at day twenty-two, we do have to have someone go out there.
But as, if we do this, then we have more, we can't just send the police there right now.
Right, but we were wondering if we put that in your motion.
Oh, I mean, if you want to amend the motion, we can amend it. Um, I will even amend it to say, send them the letter. Um, but I still think that the wording needs to be strong.
I think we should lower it to fifteen days. Because if these cars are unregistered and what the winds are saying is accurate, there's, there's unregistered cars driving in and out every single night, there's unregistered cars-
Well, being shipped out in containers.
Right, but they're-
They're not just sitting there, they're more as far around.
So, I, I, the only amendment I would make was fifteen days.
Leah, would you please entertain us and um, reread the motion, please?
Yes. Um, I, um, I move that the select board order the owner of the property located at one sixty Bedford Street to remove all the unregistered and uninsured vehicles located on said property. Um, and then also not garaged as per the bylaw, cause there is a section in the bylaw that says if you have them all in a garage and they're unregistered and insured, then they can be there, cause they're in the garage. Um, within twenty-one days of this order, because such vehicles are prohibited by chapter two fifty-one of the town's general bylaws or provide the town with proof of registration and insurance of those vehicles within twenty-one days. And further to warn the owner that the town will take enforcement action if these deadlines are not met, which may include the assessment of fines at a rate of up to three hundred per day until compliance is achieved. And actually, I don't think we, um, it's only a warning to fine and everything, it's not, it, it says in further to warn the owner, so it doesn't say we will fine, it just says to warn them that there can be enforcement action.
Alright. I would say if, if the vote does um, stand this evening, um, so effective of this um, notice, so it's twenty-one days from today.
Do you want me to amend it to business days?
Nope.
Okay.
Twenty-one days.
I mean, I'm just trying to get a sense from everyone.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we want to have this hand delivered?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, definitely, good idea.
By the police?
Yes, constable, I believe we have a few.
They are constables, yeah.
Bob, did you-
Madam Chair, I'd ask that Town Council draft the letter. That's okay with everyone?
It would have to be twenty-one days from the day of receipt, right?
Date of receipt.
Date of receipt, okay.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, um, if it wasn't amended, right? Um, any further discussion?
Yeah, one, one minor thing, just going back and look at the photos again, right? So this is only going to apply to motor vehicles. The way the bylaw's written, there's boats, there's storage containers, there's other equipment.
RV, RVs with people living in them, like, I think that's a violate, yeah, but I'm here just for one thing, I mean, we have multiple jurisdictional issues.
But let's start here.
I'm just saying, this isn't gonna clean up everything with this one bylaw.
No, I know, but we're starting, we need a starting point.
But if you don't have a business license-
This is one issue, this one thing is not gonna-
I mean, you should have a business license, I have to pay my taxes with a license, you're, you're missing out on property tax. I guess if you're fine with that, but.
Fine, alright, I'd like to call, roll, please, Fabian and I.
On your eyes.
Carbone, your eyes, can you do it?
Hey, I.
Okay.
Twenty-one days.
Twenty, twenty-one days. Leah, would you please make sure that um-
Do you want the word wanting in the letter, so I can let Town Council know? Is this a wanting, or is it?
That's a warning.
Wanting. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry I had to be so tough.
No, that's, that's okay, I understand, I understand, I'm just trying to get some direction started on this problem before someone gets hurt.
Uh, community to the scene.
Yeah, and something doesn't add up, you know, something doesn't add up.
I'm actually gonna hold on to this one.
Do you wanna keep the pictures, or?
Get a frame?
Um, if you wouldn't mind if you could please send them digitally to um, our interim town administrator.
Oh, yeah.
He will then disseminate them to the rest of the board.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I, I'd recommend you guys take a ride in and take a peek for yourself, because it's, it's, it's really, it's, I'm scared. You know, for the people around me, my kids.
You have, you're in the right place, so you can let them know.
No, I do, but they don't, their hands are tied too, they just went out and, do you know what I mean? I guess that just, I mean, generators running at midnight and cars being loaded in eighteen-wheelers, like, something doesn't add up. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, what time is it?
Seven oh six.
It's one o'clock in the morning? Um, we only have fifty items.
Okay, um, item ten, um, so there is nothing on this, um, all just to discuss um, determining, um, you know, discussing mitigation um, with regards to forty B development. Um, the town has um, discussed mitigation um, with the projects in the past. Um, I believe Member Fabian, you had a question as to like, what is the process? So this is not about any particular uh, potential development. It's not uh, supporting forty B or promoting or endorsing, it's none of that. I've been, like I said, around an elected official in town for almost ten years and I've never worked on a forty B from um, the start, so my question is, um, where do we start?
Excuse me, we just, we're having difficulty hearing, audio is not very good in here, so.
Um, so where do we start with mitigation, um, you know? So, um, certain things need to take place sometimes with streets and this and that, that, you know, uh, sometimes could cost the town money, so we don't wanna be, at, at least I don't want to incur, you know, traffic change costs or something like that. So I'm just literally looking for, I know Bob has done, you know, these before, I'm looking for advice on, you know, where we start.
If I may?
Yes.
Uh, I mean, I think it would be a collective effort uh, with various departments, working closely with the Zoning Board of Appeals, obviously they permit the forty Bs. Uh, I think it's important that departments are involved in the process early on. And they should be contacted to communicate their concerns to the Zoning Board of Appeals, whether it's infrastructure, public safety, um, you know, impact on schools, uh, and then working with Town Council, and then obviously a mitigation package could be possibly part of the package and of the final approval. Nate, I don't know, does anything else you wanna add to that? I mean, I think it's a collective effort with department heads, uh.
I mean, Madam Chair, I'd probably say, very similar to what, to Bob just said there, the challenge is, we don't know what the impacts are until we have the plan in front of us and there's been traffic studies and impact studies. It's almost like, where do you start until you know what the impact's gonna be? The, the challenge, I know this item is specific to forty B, the challenge is if you start to push back too hard, to the point where if somebody like ZBAs said, "If we don't get these mitigations, we're not gonna pass it", then they're just gonna go to the state and there's gonna be no mitigation.
Exactly, by pass, yep.
It's a super delicate balance, I think, whatever we come up with for these things, just we need to be able to say, and these are the legitimate reasons that we're asking for them, um, and go from there.
Okay. Alright, so I guess it's something that we, we work?
Yeah, I, I'm just, um, I'd like to just put it on everyone's sort of, you know, uh, to-do list, agenda, um, because I just don't want an opportunity to fall through, I mean, you know.
Yeah, do, do we have, like, this is just a-
Yeah, it was just a question, yeah, it was just a question.
Did you have anything already that you've put together that you can share with the group or through Bob?
Thinking, but like Brian said, we don't know what the big scope is, but for example, you know, um, we did have that mitigation that was put in for La Baron, which, you know, it didn't end up being the original, but we certainly, the town was able to, you know, um, to benefit by having that Department of Public Works building built. And I mean, you can't argue that, you know, uh, the DPW's been affected by, you know, trying to maintain some of that street and everything else, so I just don't want us to miss an opportunity either. And there's a lot of new folks on boards, um, there's some folks that have been around, but like me, I've been around a long time, I've never worked on a forty B from start to finish. We also have potentially two coming in, so I just don't want us to, we're, have an interim town administrator, so I just don't want us to miss an opportunity to, um, you know, to work with that.
And I think as long as we evenly apply everything.
Right.
I think that's an important component. I know historically, there's been some uneven applications, which, you know, some people feel like strong alarming or feel like someone's getting preferential treatment, that I never want to be part of a conversation, I wanna make sure that whatever we're doing, we're putting it down, it's, it's policy-based and it's, it's uh, it's as evenly applied as possible. You know, given different circumstances, sometimes require different requests.
Potentially in front of us, to Brian's point, I wanna keep saying that, potentially, cause no one's filed any concrete permits yet, right? No. So, it's some significant housing, so I just don't want it to fall through the cracks.
Like the-
Madam Chair.
Yeah, the government.
I mean, the asks have to be reasonable, obviously you have to be careful about that. Um, you know, if you wanna learn more about the process, I'm sure uh, the attorney working for the Zoning Board of Appeals would come to a select board meeting and outline what the town can and cannot ask for, I think that may be a good education for us. So if that's okay, I can reach out to KP Law.
Would you do that, and then we can coordinate?
Yeah.
Um, based on-
Questions and stuff.
The dates that we have for upcoming meetings.
Like, I think if we, if we use La Baron as an example and turn the, the dial back twenty years when it started, I think the original mitigations that were in good faith kind of built into that was, well, they expected it to be age-restricted housing, didn't work out in the end, but they expected it to be, so they were gonna give money towards the senior center, you know, the sod walks towards the senior center. And I think in the end, thankfully, we got something better. But I think that was a pretty good example of like, here's the type of project we're doing, we think it's gonna impact senior services, so we're gonna do this.
So I would add to that, that the phases kind of took a little bit of the benefit out of the equation. So whatever we're doing, like, for these agreements, we have to be mindful of-
Absolutely.
Of the language of the phases and how we approach that, because in phase six of something is different than phase one and two as far as impact.
And what was ten thousand dollars twenty years ago is no longer gonna-
Correct, yeah. And I, just on a side note too, um, when we do invite um, council, let's try to make it so that, you know, it's not just one question, that we, you know, utilize our, our time appropriately.
Alright, we'll get that on an agenda.
I mean, in the past, some of this was done, it was just done by, you know, folks, but I know this board especially is trying to be much more transparent in its process, so.
Yep, I agree. And plus, you know, we've got some newbies here too.
Yeah.
I'm a newbie.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, um, Brian, you had asked this, I believe, um, from the minute, as I highlighted it, to make sure it was on here. Um, the Assistant Animal Control Budget Line item, um, I do not have any backup here, so my apologies.
That's all right. Um, probably gonna look Tracy's way to some of this, cause she's intimately involved in that department. But um, you know, my understanding, a significant amount of vacation time was allowed to be rolled over for the, the ACO. And that would mean during their absence, there's gonna be an increased need on assistance to be called back. And I don't think we factored that in to the budget, because the vacation rollover came long after the budget was done. And so, I know there's already been some concerns on whether or not that line item is gonna work anyways for the year, and now if we've added, I think it was four or eight weeks of time, or, you know, was it eighty hours? Maybe it was eighty hours, not eighty weeks.
Cause you can do, you can do forty. You can send forty, but I think we approved another forty?
I wasn't here for that meeting, unfortunately.
Okay, I don't recall specifically, but.
I think that's the question, is do we, are we gonna have enough covered now? If we now have more anticipated outages?
No, the answer was, um, he hadn't been able to take time off, so he had all that time, I think it was a full week of extra vacation time. So we voted to approve it, um, but it was kind of with the idea and understanding that we would hopefully find someone so that he could use it. I don't think the plan is to just use it, um, they were looking for an assistant.
Cause there's a position that wasn't filled, I believe it's still an open position.
Right, but that doesn't change the outcome.
Is there any reciprocity programs with other towns for coverage?
I see why there couldn't be, it depends on, as long as it's insured and there's no liability.
Just trying to think a little bit of, you know, being able to have a mutually beneficial.
Right, I mean, go ahead.
Would this be something that you could work with, um, you know, Bob, um, over and then just kind of maybe re, report back to us?
It can try, if I have the cycles. Um, I mean, I know it's, it's a bit of a crystal ball, we don't know how much we'll need, but we set that line item based on disturbed trends and then if we're gonna be these massive rollovers, I think there needs to be some consideration given to the budgetary impact for operations.
Alright, no, absolutely.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, um, this is not a one-time issue, this has happened multiple times? So, I mean, I, I think the issue is a little bit bigger than this, this one vacation issue and, and moving it forward. So, if, if we're not properly staffed, what does properly staff look like?
Exactly.
If, if, if this is a vacation, um, issue, you know, does it become use it or lose it at a certain point? That we're, we're not rolling it over, it's not sustainable, um, or, you know, do we have to come up with Plan C? Like, you know, what does that look like, right?
I mean, you know, more broadly, maybe for another day, I think employees should simply be encouraged to use the time they earn.
Well, we, I know the boards have said that in the past, that, you know, you're, you have it here.
This does create operational challenges.
Yeah, say here, say there. So then maybe there's a policy that we don't grant it. So, that's something that we can entertain too, but, um, but for this particular instance, let's take a look at that, Brian?
Right.
Your concern is definitely a valid one, especially on that line item. Anybody else have any questions about that? Okay. Alright, um, agenda item number twelve. Um, we have on here, discuss and possibly vote on regarding email addresses for board, committee and commission members. Uh,
Madam Chair?
I know this came from-
If I may, um, as you know, we all communicate throughout the day to various uh, members on boards and commissions, uh, some board, there's very few commission members who have town emails. You should, when you're communicating town business, should be done on a town email. Uh, and reaching out to Bob McNally, our IT consultant, um, he said it's probably about ten dollars a month per email address. Um, so obviously there was expense to that. Uh, maybe, maybe starting out first with the chairman of each committee, we have a town email address, so I thought it was just good if we put it on the agenda for our discussion, if we should pursue it, if you wanna have further discussion with Bob.
Madam Chair, I had a question for Tracy. Tracy, I swear this was a vote back in twenty seventeen that we already took.
We, we did um, have town emails for boards, committees and commissions and it was found that basically ninety-five percent of them were not being used and it was a cost to the town. But um, a lot of people said, no, they didn't want it, um, they weren't gonna learn to use it, they didn't want it, so it just kind of went away.
Oh, they didn't access it?
They didn't access it, no. Um, there were just a few, a very few people that did.
Oh, seven years ago, things have changed.
But what, maybe, Brian, would you say about ten bucks per person? Maybe twenty million?
Yeah, it's gonna depend. There may, I'd have to talk to Bob. There might be something they also call like a frontline worker option that's a little less money, but, um, Bob's probably right if he's already said ten bucks. Um, the idea of doing chairs first is nice. I actually brought this up in twenty twenty, it didn't go anywhere. When we get requests for, um, you know, document requests and such, I mean, we're now hoping that when we reach out to people, that they will provide what they've got in their Gmail account or their AOL account. And we really should do our best to funnel everything into the town approved systems.
Brian, you're the expert here. This is your jam. Um, would it be inappropriate to have one email for a board?
Yes.
For like a ancillary, like board that?
I, I, without getting into probably the weeds, I wouldn't recommend a single shared account. There's security issues with that with sharing of credentials. And then you also lose accountability when you're not exactly sure who deleted an email, moved an email, marked an email as read. Um, but it would be very common practice to have a, a, a distribution group that is select board. And then we just all get the email. Um, that's super easy to do. Um, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't encourage shared credentials and having a.
I'm just cheap, Bob.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
How about if we refer this issue to the soon to be Information Technology Subcommittee chaired by member Day?
I think that's wonderful. I, I think at a minimum, you know, maybe a note needs to go around to the chairs of the committees that says, to speak to people, that says, you know, do you want to use, you know, uh, a personal email or, you know, just to clear that up a little?
The implication of using their personal emails to do town business?
Some folks say they don't care, but as, but.
As someone that's gone through an FBI request of, of emails and then had other people's emails open up for, for that, like, that's just a really bad idea is to use your own email.
There's something to be said too on, um, the level of professionalism. I mean, I know some of my email addresses, I picked them when I was sixteen years old, right? Yeah, so to get an email from, I don't know, Cranberry Muffins at AOL, and that's not me, that's Nate's. Like, it's a little different than getting one from.
Town of, yeah.
Yeah. I know a couple of folks that are on committees, that some residents have been using their work emails, which, you know, that's, that's a.
Their work would not be happy.
Yeah, so I would make a rec, I would make a request to, you know, the public at large, if you're looking for someone, you know, I mean, reach out, there's plenty of us that, you know.
I get responses from the public that when they reach out to a town email, it bounces back a lot. Yeah, or they don't get a response. Or, you know, or, or those type of things. I think, I think education, uh, of our boards and committees on what could be the liabilities that they would incur by putting things on their own, uh, email. Uh, I think that's an important conversation. Um, and then, you know, just like you said, the professionalism and being able to have a valid, you know, someone's getting, they, they feel valid, uh, advice or valid direction. Um, and it's not just someone shoots something out.
There's probably also a level of like, what, what clerical support do we give our boards now or not give some of them? Where you might have somebody that's tracking those requests coming in and then saying, hey, did anybody get back to so and so on this request? Yes, no? No.
Um, I can tell you, um, for the CPC in Middleborough, our chair has an email. And she distributes the, any emails to the board members. The board members reply back to her. So we have a record of what comes in, what comes back from the board members for Freedom of Information Act.
Is that a bylaw, is that? How, how did you implement it?
We asked the town for it. Because I was aware of what happens when you use your personal emails. And I didn't feel that we should be using our personal emails.
Tracy, you remember.
You remember.
I do, yeah.
Does it have to be an email server? Could we do something like, um, like a Discord or Slack or Teams?
We'd have to ask.
I, I think what we would find is that you, you start to reach generational boundaries of technology and emails the most, um, democratized across people. Um, I love Discord, I love Slack, um, but you're not gonna get my parents to use it.
True. And, and just for the record, I have no idea what you're talking about. I'm sixty, so.
That's funny.
Brenna and I will be on there talking on it.
I actually know what that.
Pokemon group on Discord. All right, so, um, yeah, we'll defer that to our upcoming, upcoming vote.
Call performance punishment.
Um, okay, uh, town meeting, uh, special town meeting. Uh, setting the date, so, um, right now, we're looking at Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-four for the special town meeting. Um, so we had followed up with the town clerk. The town clerk would not be available, uh, the twen, October twenty-first, twenty-eighth or November fourth. So that's why it was, um, proposed the twelfth. Um, it was also suggested, um, by our interim town administrator at our last meeting when we had brought this up. So, uh, council's been checked with town clerk, moderator, all available. However, um, we do have one slight challenge. Um, so because. You can move it?
They can move that, I mean, town meeting is.
Town meeting.
And we need to have it done, so I'm sure ZBA would be amenable to move it. So I'd ask that it be November twelfth.
All right, so do I hear a motion to set the special, second? Motion second, discussion?
Do you, uh, move location or move date?
No.
Move location. ZBA will move their location. They may move their home meeting.
Do we know what they'll be discussing at the meeting?
Doesn't matter.
No, they can maybe reschedule, but obviously town, we need to have the town meeting.
No, I, I completely understand that. Um, the ZBA meetings lately have been very important to people. So I'm just saying, if you're having the town meeting, people are gonna be forced to choose between town meetings.
Oh, no, they, they, they won't have it the same night.
Wouldn't be the same night.
They'll reschedule the meeting.
Okay.
They'll reschedule, definitely reschedule the meeting.
Okay, got it.
I don't think in, in the history of, of Lakeville town government, there's ever been another meeting held on the same night as town meeting, so.
Okay.
Oh, maybe, school committee? Didn't they have one before a town meeting?
They had one the day of election, I think it was.
One, yeah, the election, yeah. All right, so I, I stand corrected. Okay. All right, motion second, we had discussion, uh, roll please.
Fabian, aye.
Tony, you aye.
Carboni, aye.
Aye.
All right, um, we need to.
Was there any time in that motion?
Well, six thirty, right? Isn't that when we?
Sometime when it's just a special, you start at seven.
Oh, that is true. So your so moved motion, would you like to make it six thirty?
I shall amend to make the motion six thirty.
At the upon a high school, I would try it.
Yes.
Same.
All the above.
Aye.
Thank you. Fabian, aye.
Tony, you aye.
Carboni, aye.
Andy, aye.
All right, we need to open the warrant, um. So it's open for two weeks, which would be around, um, August twenty-sixth. So I will be putting that on the next agenda.
Well, I know, I think you could open the warrant tonight. And I would ask that it be extended into September. People are waiting.
Yep.
Just because it's been done in the past, doesn't it?
Three weeks.
I would say.
Yeah, but I need a date to close.
We meet on the ninth, right? That would be, that would be the middle of September. So with a twelfth, twenty-sixth and the ninth.
September ninth is on Monday.
Yep. Do you want to close at the Friday before?
Yeah, September sixth.
September sixth would be the, uh, close date.
Yep.
All right, do I have a motion to open the warrant, um, this evening, August twelfth? Um, and closing the warrant for the special town meeting scheduled now for November twelfth? Um, to close the warrant on September sixth.
So moved.
Second.
Ma'am Chair.
Time.
At twelve PM. It's the happy day on Friday.
On the twelfth?
The sixth.
The sixth, we'll close it at four PM.
Twelve PM is fine. If you would please include that.
That's important.
So open tonight? Open tonight, August twelfth. Close date is September sixth, twelve PM. And this is for the special town meeting, um, that we scheduled for November twelfth. Six thirty, at upon a. Motion second, all those in favor, signify by, uh, roll.
Fabian, aye.
Tony, you aye.
Carboni, aye.
Andy, aye.
Aye.
Ma'am Chair, can I ask made the motion a second?
The motion? Motion was made by Brenna.
Seconded.
Moree.
Okay, um, item fifteen, discuss and vote on the approval of the September third primary warrant. So the town clerk has submitted the September third, twenty twenty-four primary warrant for the board's approval. Um, so do we typ, we typically read this, right?
Yes.
But we can waive the reading.
Okay.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to?
Make a motion to waive the reading.
Motion second, any discussion, roll?
Fabian, aye.
Tony, you aye.
Carboni, aye.
Andy, aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll, um, now the motion would stand, um, to accept the warrant, uh, for the twenty twenty-four state primary, um, scheduled for Tuesday, the third day of September twenty twenty-four from seven AM to eight PM, precincts one, two and three at Ted Williams Loon Pond Lodge, twenty-eight Precinct Street.
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll?
Fabian, aye.
Tony, you aye.
Carboni, aye?
Andy, aye.
Aye.
What would happen if we didn't? Nothing?
Yeah, if we didn't, could we even hold the election?
Nothing.
Okay, nothing. Okay, item sixteen, which is a, which is a good thing. Um, this had come up in, um, one of our previous meetings. I think, um, our animal control officer had mentioned, um, receiving a gift. So our, um, we need to accept the gift, uh, to the Lakeville Animal Shelter and authorize, um, the chair to sign the release of all demands and indemnification agreement. Attaches the letter from Plymouth Investment notifying the town that a bequest of fifty thousand dollars has been left to the Lakeville Animal Shelter from Vivian Lee Trust in honor of Edward J. Lee and Vivian Lee. Which is a very amazing. Yes, okay, so, um, there's a motion that we could do to accept the gift from, uh, Vivian Lee Trust and authorize the chair to sign the standard release of demands and indemnification agreement.
I'd like to make a motion to, a motion to accept the gift from the Vivian Lee Trust and authorize the chair to sign the standard release of demands and indemnification agreement.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion? Where do you begin to say thank you?
It's amazing. Thank you very much. The only question I had is, I didn't see any besides being spent on the animal shelter. Are there any particular things that it needs to be used on? Or is it at our discretion, as long as it's to the benefit of the animal shelter?
If I recall, it was to the benefit of the animal shelter and the animals.
I would just ask that if we haven't yet, we already sent a letter back to, thank you, thank you, thank you.
It's just amazing. So yes, we would like to have a letter. Miss, where was it, maybe in the last one, where they were from or?
Vivian Lee?
Yeah.
She's from Lakeville.
Oh, okay. I would, I would like to send a thank you letter on behalf of.
I would like to sign it, if we can, uh, we could sign a handwritten one or something up.
Tracy, would you make that happen for us, please? And then we can all sign.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion?
Maybe we can have Dave sign too.
That would be even better. Having him sign as well. Good idea. You got that, Trace?
Yes.
Okay, roll please.
Fabian, aye.
Tony, you aye.
Carboni, aye.
Andy, aye.
Aye.
All right, number seventeen, um, in front of you, we're just looking for comments, um, for the planning board, they are gonna be meeting on August fifteenth, um, regarding revisions to the Pinecrest Village definitive subdivision plan. So this was a lot, um, to kind of go through, but, um, there were comments from previous, um, submittal and the responses are italicized after each of the sections. I don't really. Wondering if the, any of the other board members here this evening would have any, um, comments on this. I usually, uh, on these kinds of things, kind of tend to stick to what the department heads have suggested. It's not like it's a public building or, you know.
And if it's a water allocation, that will come in front of us. If it's, you know, something else, earth removal, that would come in front of us, so. Are they right? Oh, excuse me. Yes?
At some point, I'd like to ask a question, right? I live on my quest and so we're interested in the proposed subdivision.
Oh, okay, if you wouldn't mind, your name, please?
My name's Alan Melchior. I live at Four Pinecrest.
I'm sorry, what was?
Melchior, M-E-L-C-H-I-O-R. I live at Four Pinecrest. So we're paying attention to the proposed subdivision. I don't know what the previous comments are, but the one thing that I would highlight is that the, one of the concerns of the neighbors is who will maintain the, um, the, the drainage system? There's a requirement of this subdivision, there's a town of Hillside. If the drainage system doesn't work, the water will come down into the neighborhood and into people's yards and houses. Uh, the initial drainage plan stated that the developer would maintain the drainage system until it was complete and then would turn it over to the town. And given that this is a, a cul-de-sac at the end of a mile of private road, we don't think that the town is at all likely to want to, um, take on that piece. And, and it might be helpful to have the select board make it clear that the town is not going to, uh, take on responsibility for that property.
If, if I may, Ma'am Chair, that is buried in here. It's item number twenty, um, page fifty-five in our packet, which is exactly to what you were referring there. Um, there was an update on that item. It says, the O N M plan has been revised, so the homeowners association will be responsible for the maintenance of the drainage system.
So there isn't a homeowners association at the moment for that development?
Then they'd better be creating one.
Right.
I just hope that's in another document somewhere.
Yep.
So, so far it isn't. There are two homeowners associations in the area, neither of which is inclined to take on this additional responsibility. This property isn't part of the current homeowners associations.
I don't think I've ever seen something listed that doesn't exist yet. So that would be a question, I guess.
Oh, for, for Nate Darling?
For the planning board?
Question for Nate Darling? I'm, I'm already grounded, no.
Apparently be in front of, it's on the agenda for conservation, uh, tomorrow as well. But I, I think if, if there is a way of phrasing that there needs to be a clear plan for the long-term maintenance of the, uh, drainage systems, um, we, we think that's important.
I think in the best interest of the town, that would probably be a very good thing for us to support.
So we could have a, a comment back to planning then saying, you know, please clarify who this homeowners association is and does it exist yet and when will it?
Just because I might be a little confused, so. Robbins Lane?
Yep.
Is private?
Yes.
So then you go down to?
Mark Twain, Hickory, Beechtree, and Pinecrest are all private roads.
They're all private?
Yes.
Okay, alright. So we don't plow there?
Nope.
We don't?
And the roads don't meet the town standard, which is another issue that the fire chief, I believe, raised in a letter to the planning board. I don't know if it made it into the materials review, but I haven't seen anything that addresses any of the fire chief's concerns. It's certainly not in the planning documents that are posted online.
I think it does.
It was answered in here.
Say here, yeah, that it's been increased to 20 feet wide.
Eighteen to twenty.
Yes, but the other comments were that the roads are narrow and the roads leading in not sufficient to handle a fire truck going in. And so there was concerns about whether the, in this case, the planning board would give them a waiver of the quality of the road leading in.
So not the new proposed road, but those that mile and a half getting there?
Yes. Yeah, so they've widened the road in the cul-de-sac so that the fire truck can get there and can turn around. But it's, there's some concern about whether a fire truck could actually get all the way down there.
That's concerned.
We asked the voice to me, the voice of Lakeville.
I don't know about that. So this is something that we've missed many, many times on definitive subdivision plans, the operation and maintenance of drainage systems and all too often we find out when it's too late and there was never a restriction or a condition on the approval, so I think it's a, the current planning board is well aware of this. Beals and Thomas, environmental partners who does peer review for us. They're aware of it. KP Law, Amy Quesel works with the planning board very closely. Has written the last few decisions for them. And they've always included the establishment of an HOA. Council reviews the establishment in the HOA documents and makes sure that operation and maintenance is included in that so that it does protect you. To a certain extent, of course, because it's not an immediate town way. Lakeville, to some extent, takes a backseat to that covenant. It becomes a little bit difficult for the town to enforce, but it's still, there's limited accountability. By having that condition on a definitive subdivision plan, we can enforce it, but it's just, can be difficult to enforce. But, so you want to make sure, and Beals and Thomas does this, they make sure that the drainage structures require limited maintenance. They try to find stuff that is easy to maintain and operates for years without maintenance, but I guess to that, to that point, a recommendation.
In a simple sense, we look, this is in the middle of the woods, the drain, the scupper is going to fill up with leaves, the first fall.
And you're not seeing the quick infiltration rates or any of those type of things, so you do have a system that might be prone to flooding.
Yeah.
But I guess the short answer was, would be it is going to be written in the condition of the planning board. Yeah, but it doesn't hurt to reiterate that and just.
So the concern here is flooding?
Right, the drainage.
Maintenance of the drainage.
Oh, maintenance of it, got it, thank you.
Yeah, so over time, if maintenance on drainage system isn't done, that drainage system fails, it either gets silted in and no longer infiltrates or weeds and invasives grow in drainage swales and it no longer functions and provides treatment like it was supposed to.
And in this case, it will then overflow and send stormwater into Long Pond, which will further the.
And snow removal can be packed up too. We see a lot of times, nobody says anything about snow removal, next thing you know, see all the snow and drainage ditch and then it doesn't perform.
Makes sense.
I appreciate it, thank you very much. Alright, we have a motion of. That we'd like to submit.
What are your comments?
We're doing that now.
Okay.
Just reinforcing that there will be an HOA established and maintaining the drainage and any other maintenance is necessary.
Okay.
And I mean, I know it says that the fire department concerns are addressed by the 20-foot pavement.
Wide, yeah.
Width. I mean, just. Make sure.
I mean, those are small roads leading into it.
Very small.
And we do have other roads like that in town.
Yeah.
But we don't want them.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Because that was a challenge even when there was the. Was it Robbins Lane or one of those roads, there was a home fire? Was it last year or before?
Yeah, it was, yep.
And that was challenging to get the stuff in there.
Yep.
That's right. There's really nothing we can do for the roads leading to the roads because they are existing.
Well, I mean, Robbins Lane is pretty decent, but then you start to go down.
Curving mark, those curve area, it becomes a little less decent.
Do you want to add in the, that they appropriate an area for a snow removal?
One that's not the drainage, right?
It's, planning's purview, right? So we can just recommend they consider it in there.
Right, they can consider that too. So just suggestions. So Tracy, it's the. Brian, if you could just state it again. So that Tracy has your.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ensure the establishment of an HOA is followed through on for the maintenance of drainage and all other systems related to the subdevelopment. As well as. Now I've lost my train of thought.
Snow, snow removal.
Thank you.
And then definitely the fire requests for the road, which yeah, we support the.
Okay, there was a lot on here.
Yes, there was.
So there were three things, Tracy. Okay. Can we take a five-minute break or two-minute break? If you okay?
Love to.
Sure, thank you. Lakeham, we'd like to take a. Five-minute break.
Sounds good.
Where are we, eighteen?
All right, after a brief break, I would like to, if it's all right with the board, to take item twenty-one, Agenda Item Twenty-One, and bring that forward. So we have an appointment request from the Open Space Committee to appoint Lynn Morley to fill the vacancy on the committee. If appointed, the term will expire on July thirty-first, 2025. So we have a letter from the Open Space that they had recommended this appointment. And we have a letter from Ms. Morley, and Ms. Morley is here in the audience if we've had any questions. But we can entertain a motion to...
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, any discussion? Very happy that you...
Thank you for being interested.
I'm sorry we made you wait all this time. I'm really, I'm really happy to see...
You wanted to make sure you really wanted it.
Really happy to see Lynn come forward, especially for Open Space, because that's, that's a lot that goes on with Open Space.
Does that fill us out in Open Space? Are we still missing?
I don't, I think that's everything.
I think we might be filled. I have to check, but I think we are.
I'm pretty sure.
I think that's like one committee that is full, because it's a seven-member committee.
Excellent, okay. Roll, please.
Baby and I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I. And Dido, I.
Do, I.
All right, thank you.
Actually, members, Madam Chair, we really have cut down on the vacancies of the committee with all the recent appointments. So, good to be good.
Yeah, so people I know so excited about just coming out and joining us. Tracy, keep Lynn Morley's name on file, because she has HR experience, so we might have other boards who might need to come in and hang out on.
Tracy, will she get a call in a few days to talk to the clerk, or?
No, when you sign, I'll send her a quick quote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to move Agenda Item Eighteen to the end. No, I'm sorry, no, that's the one we want to do now. So, discuss some possible vote on livery license requests from Luxor Limo and Transportation at Fort Industrial Drive. We received the request. The application is here. In front of us, the applicant is proposing a one-vehicle and no employees other than himself, and all necessary information has been included. So we asked our enforcement officer if this would be allowed. And because if I'm not mistaken, this is, this is an industrial, industrial drive. So that's residential neighborhood, I believe?
It's industrial.
Industrial, there you go.
I think the key to that would be the word "industrial drive."
Well, you know, I don't want to just assume.
No, you can't do that, as we've learned earlier.
Nope. Okay, so Nate, would you like to speak to this before we entertain a motion to approve this?
Well, I just see this as an opportunity to possibly button up the process.
So, the application itself, in my opinion, really doesn't give me a lot to go on. So without canvassing an applicant, it's hard to say whether or not it would fit into a certain zoning character or what would be required. So where is this as an owner-operated livery where it's just the one vehicle and the owner is actually driving that vehicle? It's not an issue, so they take a one parking spot. But if this was an instance where you had six or eight vehicles, or even two or three, I need to look at the property to see if the parking is still adequate, whether or not they're going to have office space inside the existing building in conjunction with this vehicle being parked there, or if it's just, A, we need to place the park a vehicle and this is where it's going to be. Because it's, it's hard, you know, it's hard to make a determination with very little information. So I don't, I don't know if it's something... And it would be prudent to have that information for you guys to take a vote. And this one's, this one's not a problem. But I would encourage, would encourage the board to consider policy on how you take applications in for this, just to give a little bit more information, that's all.
That could be for the Policy Subcommittee group. Making all the friends tonight.
Action, I know.
Right, action, I know.
Action, I know. Madam Chair, for you. Mr. O'Leary, if they added on more employees, would they have to resubmit? Or more cars, do they have to resubmit? Is that the process?
I would, I'd actually believe that I put that in my email, is that...
I don't have your email.
Matthew, yes, they would. We had another livery license that added on, and he just came back before the board. This is the first time we've had a new license since I've been here. I didn't even have a form, I made it up really quick. Because the ones that were in town, I inherited when I came onboard in nineteen ninety-nine. So this is, this was the first time we've done a new one.
I'd be happy to work with you if you want, and just give you some ideas of what I would be looking for. And really, the Fire Department as well. Because, you know, this might be similar to what we did with our road license application through the DPW Director, where you have a couple other eyes on it. Because, you know, if this vehicle all of a sudden is parked right next to a building or blocking a fire lane, a lot of the parking area on those properties are just dirt. They've been established over the years, so they're not necessarily designated parking spots. But there's probably a process that we can, we can work out to make sure that the Select Board's making an informed decision on these.
And this license would be annual, correct? So this would come back in front of us? So this would be, expiration date would be July thirty-first?
Uh, no, this is a license that expires on December thirty-first.
December thirty-first, okay. There it is, thirty-five dollars.
Thirty-five dollars per vehicle.
There it is. Thank you. So twenty-twenty-four, okay.
So if he adds a second vehicle, like, say he wants to get something larger for more people or more luggage, would he have to come back and pay another thirty-five dollars?
Yes, he has to come back to have his permit.
Like you said, it's a pretty light process here.
Yeah, what if he switched cars? Would he have to come back?
And it'd be interesting to ask the person, is there a particular reason why you want to be based out of the industrial drive? Because if you are a sole owner-operator, is there any benefit to just operating out of your home? Or is there a state statute that requires livery services to be in certain areas? I mean, I don't know if they're paying rental fees this place or not, or...
I know, when I look at it, Brian, I thought of very similar things. So owner-operated vehicles of this nature would be no different than your local plumber, a carpenter, electrician bringing their vehicle home. So I would see no reason from a zoning perspective that they couldn't operate this out of their vehicle if they lived in Lakeville or in any other adjacent community. Unless there's a statute specific to liveries that disallow that, for some reason.
So I guess we'll have to further discuss that, you know, through our policymaking. But we've got, what, five months for now? So, oh, is that the end of December this year expires? I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't see it in the packet. It might just be because it's personal information. But we have their proof of insurance. Liveries typically have to carry a much higher...
Yes, yes. I have a copy of his license and a certificate of insurance, but I left it out.
Yeah, that's a...
That's fine.
Yep. And the certificate of insurance would expire when?
Uh, May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, that's great. We'll entertain a motion to approve the application for a livery license from Luxor Limo and Transportation at Fort Industrial Drive.
So moved.
With an expiration date of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Sorry, Brenna.
That's okay, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll, please. Thank you, Nate.
Baby and I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
And Dido, I.
Do, I.
Okay, Agenda Twenty. With our Veterans Agent retiring, we had put our Human Resource... Good night, everybody. Director on the hunt for a new Veterans Agent. So in front of us this evening is a letter from our Human Resource Director requesting the appointment of Christine Boone as the Veterans Agent. This appointment will have a term which would expire April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. So I make a motion that we appoint Christine Boone as the Veterans Agent, term to expire April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Madam Chair, in speaking with the HR Director today, she requested it be the Veterans Services Officer and also needs to be appointed as a Graves Officer as well.
A Graves Officer?
Yes, all of our Veterans Agents serve as Graves Officer. And it was in the job description that they would be maintaining the veterans' graves and assisting veterans' families with burials and stuff like that.
Okay, I'm going to make this request one more time. When there's going to be a last-minute change suggestion for a motion, I would like it in writing before the board, before we get to that item.
Madam Chair, Veterans Service Officer and Graves Officer?
Mm-hmm. I'll withdraw my motion. We'll start over.
Do you have to say Veterans Graves Officer? Just to not be confused with the cemetery?
That is the title we've been using forever. Graves Officer.
Veterans Service and Graves Officer or any other name that should come from... Like, I don't want to make it messy, but, okay.
I like that one, actually. Veterans Service and Graves Officer.
Yep.
Okay. So you want to make the motion again? Make a motion to appoint Christine Boone as the Veterans Service and Graves Officer?
Mm-hmm.
Term to expire... Oh, term to expire April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Do we need to include the grade and salary, or no?
Nope. It didn't change.
Because we had already approved that when we put it out, too.
Yes.
That was the last thing, the last being...
Okay, got it. Okay, then that's the whole motion.
That was the motion.
Second.
Discussion? After looking at her resume, I'm really excited to see what she'll be able to do with a full-time position, actually. Super excited for this. Yeah. Agreed. Roll, please. Baby and I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
And Dido, I.
Do, I.
Okay, now we have, we had some movement on our Council on Aging Board, and there's a letter in front of us to appoint Rosemary Duclos as the full member, and Carolyn Mullin and Janice Kachi as the alternate members on the Council on Aging Board. The letter from the Chair on the Council on Aging was requesting the above appointment. So if appointed, Ms. Duclos's term would expire on July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven, and the alternates would expire on July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. We'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll, please. Baby and I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
And Dido, I.
Do, I.
Tracy, I know you're going to have to pull that out, because we didn't really see.
I got it.
Okay, good. All right. In front of us, we have a request to vote and reappoint Richard Colati as the Constable. And this is a civil, civil, for civil purposes only, with a term to expire August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. We have a letter here from Mr. Colati requesting it, and I believe Tracy had sent an email to Chief Ripens. And...
It is, I think I gave you all a copy of his email?
Yeah, thank you.
And he was away last week, so that's why it came today.
Okay, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to appoint Richard Colati as, or reappoint Richard Colati as a Constable for civil purposes only with a term to expire August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion?
Come back, Richard.
Roll.
Do we need to put for civil process only in the motion?
Yes.
Thought I heard it.
I think you did.
I did.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. Baby and I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
And Dido, I.
Do, I.
Okay, we also, this was a last-minute thing, because the Parks Commission had met at the end of last week. So I asked Tracy to put this on so that the CPC will have a full membership at their next coming meeting. So the recommendation from the Parks Commission would be to appoint Brittany Lepore as their representative to the Community Preservation Committee with a term to expire on July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Can I get a so moved?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll, please. Baby and I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
And Dido, I.
Do, I. Is that a full CPC now, too?
Yep.
It's getting crazy around here.
Okay, updates on building. The Senior Center Food Pantry, Mr. N...
Moving forward with design, and Palmeri is working on a scope of service.
Excellent. Fire Station Building Committee, we're meeting this Wednesday. We had to cancel our last meeting, so whatever was on that agenda is shifting to this agenda. So we'll be meeting on Wednesday. I'm sure I'll have more to report out at our next meeting. Old Colony?
Uh, no news. The next meeting is actually next Monday. So more probably on the twenty-sixth.
Excellent. Town Administrator Search Committee? Um, so... Lauren, do you want to give the update?
I will give the update. Last time we met, the board was going to send a letter to the Select Board, which we saw we had sent out to the Select Board about the process and about, what, additional criteria? So after that letter was sent out and verified, verified first with Town Council of the appropriateness of the nature and it was in scope for the board, reopened the search with MRI associates. It was reposted on the town website and reposted the MRI associates. Leah, did I get everything on that?
Yep. Where else did they post it?
MRI's website?
Oh, their website, okay.
And I think that posting closed today. Yeah, and there was no additional charge for that. It was within the scope of doing it. It's something they've done multiple times. And without giving away any executive session, it was by vote of the board that we made sure that it went through Town Council before. We said that we had the ability to do that within our ranks. So Town Council did agree that that was under the purview of the board, is my understanding. I didn't speak to Town Council. I believe it was Lacey that spoke to Town Council, and she affirmed it.
And Lacey and I also talked to Town Council on Friday. And what we got from Tim was that it would be in the purview if there was not satisfactory applicants, there weren't enough applicants. So I'm not going to drag this out. I'm going to go along. I don't like this. I think it was outside the charge. I'm going to go along with it and see what happens. Because the charge stated that if the Search Committee or Screening Committee reported that there were no successful interviews, to which there has been zero interviews, then they may be tasked, may be tasked, with going back out. And to me, that means that they would have to have come to us and reported that we have no viable candidates. What would you like us to do? And give an opportunity to say, pay's wrong, description's wrong, it's just, you know, it's just not the right market right now. What do you want us to do? And then we would say, go back out, propose.
Couple of questions.
Yep.
So when Lacey was given the charge to reach out, I'm understanding that would have been the end of it. And then there was a second communication that happened with you. That wasn't a vote of the board, that was just you individually going for that communication, correct?
Correct. Just as we've heard, there's been others tonight.
So there is so much that goes on when you have multiple members reaching out for different answers with, with the thing. So can we get to some place where, where we're sharing, like, sharing out that information? Because that would have been helpful for me to understand.
At that point, the horse was out of the barn, so I'm going to let it play out. But I would say that, as all of us here know, and especially you as a former Town Administrator, the answer to Town Council is based on the way you frame the question.
Well, yes, so, and also, you know, what you're asking of them. Can I get, can I get away with this? Can this be in scope? Is this, and all that stuff?
And when you break down the charge...
So therefore, multiple answers could be true in this, you know, shrugging his cat kind of scenario, where Lacey's getting one answer and then you're getting another. But I don't know. That makes it kind of unproductive.
Well, I would say that it was within the charge of the Screening Committee had the process been followed. I would absolutely agree with that. I am of the opinion the process was not followed. But that's pretty much all I have to say at this.
So it's difficult when you ask for opinion of Council, and then you get two different opinions depending on who asks. So I will say, the Screening Committee was very specific that they wanted Council to weigh in in order to make sure they were not out of scope.
Right.
So there was no malice or malintent of the board. They wanted to make sure that it was in scope. And when they were given the answer that it's in scope, then it proceeded.
So in the meeting you missed, there was multiple questions here that night on what was posted. There was a deadline, there would have to be reposting. The Select Board would do that. And it still just happened. So, but I'm just one person.
No, well, I appreciate, I appreciate the perspective.
Well, may I, at this point, jump in? We still haven't confirmed interviewing three of the original candidates. So we've only confirmed interviewing two. And this is just stuff that I didn't want to say publicly, but... So at that point, if someone drops out, then we don't have enough candidates to bring forward. So I would offer that...
So I asked, I asked him that question. I said, what, what is? Because we all are aware of the fact that a Screening Committee can't come out and just say, this is the only one, that's it, right? That's been proven in court, they can't do that. But, you know, and Lacey, I'd assume she would be here tonight, so she can't confirm. But we said, you know, what happens if you've got four people you want to pass on? And then there's multiple TA searches going on in this area. So you could have multiple people suddenly get offers, drop out, whatever, we've seen it happen. And he said, as long as the Search Committee has made a recommendation of at least multiple people, it's not their problem if people drop out. That, that's something you can't control. You don't know when they're suddenly going to say, I've got something else, or I've got a family situation that changed. So, you know, as long as you got two, you're, you're good. As long as you can recommend two. And then if somebody drops out later, you can't control that. At the end of the day, the Select Board still has the hiring authority. So they make the determination whether...
Sure, this is just an advisory board.
The Screening Committee.
But, you know, and that's, that's where it's a difference of opinion, Brian. Because in my opinion, if we recommend two and one drops out, then we're only offering, you know, one, and that goes against, it's, you know...
I totally see that, absolutely. Because you're like, we've only given you one choice. But I think everybody here is adult enough to say, well, we can talk to them, and if it's not the right fit, back we go. I'm not, I'm not going to feel compelled if there's only one person to say, well, that's all we got, we got to hire them.
Now, technically, don't we have to give two?
Yeah.
Right, but then if one drops out for other reasons...
Oh, prior, or after we recommend.
You recommended it, right. That was the thing, that it's beyond our...
Yep. I appreciate your perspective.
Do we get any updates? Have more people applied? Or we don't know yet?
I believe two applied, and they will be given the same amount of time to complete the essays. Now, we've also run into a little, not snafu, but... So we have people on the committee who have vacation times. Lillian is one of our members, and she's got elections. So between people's vacations and the elections and a few other things, it's going to slow down this process a little bit. So just another heads up to the board that, you know... And I don't want to do, I don't want to personally, I don't want to go forward into interviews without all seven folks.
Can, can, I mean, can we do something where someone gets an individual interview, or...
I'd rather do it as a, because the problem too is then you don't, it's just we go in with a set of questions. We're, we also worked on the questions. We go in with a set of questions and sometimes they bring you to a tangent you may not get to if you did a different.
So here's my concern. This was started back in December, January. We were talking about it. And then when the committee was actually formed, it was before the election. We held a position for another member for the select board. That's April. We are at the end of August. We've just extended our interim town administrator's contract. And I, we knew that this was going to be a long process. I didn't anticipate it being this long. And now we're running into a problem because of scheduling.
It's usually almost like a six month process though, between all the postings and everything. But that was another reason.
We just got our list two weeks ago of what with the open, with the questions and everything. So we just got our full list of people two weeks ago. So understanding the process is very slow and cumbersome and but it was slow and cumbersome before it got to this juncture as well.
One of the challenges I see here is that if I was an applicant, I've now got another three or so weeks before I even get an interview. It's a lot of time to lose somebody good.
Right, there is going to be communication though with, there's already been communication with the folks that, you know, we're trying to be very respectful of people's time. So, you know, that they weren't selected to go into the interviews. And then there is communication happening between the folks that you do want to interview. So we're trying to be, and everyone in the group is absolutely trying to be respectful of the applicants. Everyone is, you know, putting their best foot forward for the town and coming up with questions. But this was another reason why we wanted to continue and calling council because we didn't want to abort the search either. And just say, uh, wasn't a successful search, didn't have enough candidates. Then we start all over again.
Well, we're here today. When's your next meeting? I haven't got it yet.
Yeah. I don't even know.
Like not scheduled?
No, it's scheduled. I just don't remember. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, if you can send an email tomorrow.
I'll let you know when it is tomorrow.
That would be very helpful.
Madam Chair, my recommendation would be, we don't need the full complement. Every board just needs a quorum. We do select board meetings with just a quorum. I, I understand the importance of this position, but we need to find a way to expedite that is not at the, you know, these applicants, it's not their fault that we can't get seven people in a room. It's a standardized list of questions, totally get tangents happen. But if we try to keep.
We couldn't, couldn't we do it hybrid then?
Absolutely.
I don't know why you couldn't.
Absolutely.
No reason, it falls the same rules as we are, Stu.
Yep.
If we could, in main body, get the people that are not going to be around, maybe in hybrid.
And you just need five.
Yeah. I mean, you know, look at the clerk's schedule, that kind of with the elections. And it's not just the election, it's the early voting, which is daily for a while. So, but yeah, we can work on that.
I mean, I, I'd love to see them here on the 26th or that week. And I think if MRI is getting, well, it's closed now, but like everybody that applies, just lock in an interview date. And if, and if you don't need it, because you're like, no, they don't really make the cut, then you don't need it. At least you've locked it in.
Yeah, we, we, I think we all decided we want to do them all at one time instead of doing, you know, a couple this week, a couple next week or, because we're all, you're in the same train of thought all day.
Okay.
Right.
Madam Chair, do you have a potential agenda you'd like to see them here?
We have Mr. Nunes here until October 15th. And we had a request from this board that we'd have at least a couple of weeks of overflow. So I would like to have by the end of September, beginning of the middle of October, latest.
Starting, you mean?
Yeah.
So working back from now.
Or at least have a, a candidate.
Negotiating or?
Right.
And we've got the 26th, we've got the ninth, we could have a special if we need to, but and I don't know who you have for candidates, what kind of candidates you have, but you know, the, the last hire we did, there was a 60, 90 day period that they had to give time.
Yeah.
So hopefully we don't run into that.
I don't think we have anyone in the pool that would have to give three months notice.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah.
Just remember there's the negotiation part that comes after.
Yep.
That extends things sometimes significantly. So I would even worse, not at all. And then you have to go back. It's a very competitive landscape right now. They were doing recruitment for Rochester. They're doing recruitment for Dartmouth. They're doing recruitment for, what else was it? Was it Wareham? With the ATA in Wareham? There's just a lot.
Which all in my opinion begs to the point of we've got to get our wheels moving. There was all commutable communities to here.
Absolutely, and.
I think Rochester picked theirs.
Yeah, they were interviewing three.
I think they picked it though.
Tonight, I mean, it's tonight.
Was it tonight?
Yep.
So I, I guess my original thought was that we would have somebody secured for the end of September. But realistically, you know, if we, as long as we have somebody that we can, might not be starting mid-October, but at least it would be nice to have a decision made.
And, and our board can bring forward as quick as they can, you know, after adding those interviews.
I'd just like to remind everybody that this, this board appointed, at least Brian, Maureen, before the other two select board members joined us, appointed these folks. And in most cases, I think in all cases, they were pretty unanimous, the folks that we appointed to the committee. So they obviously are respected members of our, you know, of our community, of our town government, of our employees. So I want to just keep that in mind, you know. So none of this, almost every decision, every decision we've made has been a unanimous decision. It's not even like we've had a split vote on something. So I'd like to just, you know, give the folks that are on this committee the respect that they deserve. And just remind folks that if we had gone with what would have been our first instinct, we would have been starting a search all over again. And we would have been looking for someone to fill the town administrator interim seat for a few months. So maybe we should have, but hopefully this way we will actually get a candidate that can sit in the seat and, and get the position done, filled.
When does MRI, or MRI ask this differently? I'm sorry. How much time do they give for the essays to come back?
Um, 10 days.
But they've already been issued. That doesn't preclude someone from being interviewed that had already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, like I don't.
I'm trying to say this in a, a non-disclosing way.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's fine. But like, again, you've got some, I think the last update we got, you said there was two at least that you wanted to interview. There's no reason you can't bang that out. And then if there's others that are viable from this new extension, do those.
We have all of it lined.
I don't, no, because we're waiting until September, so we don't. We've, we've got to figure this out. Get a quorum, get the first few interviews done and then you have a sense.
I mean, I guess my question to you, Brian, is rushing and putting the wrong person in the chair a better option?
I'm not, I'm not saying to rush. I'm not saying to put the wrong person in. But there's nothing saying we can't interview candidates you've already decided that you would like to. And then after, after you've done those, you've already got some other folks that sounds like potentially in the pipeline and knock them out.
I know, but I don't know how that buys us more time. We, it's not like we're interviewing 12 where we would need two days.
I don't know.
I, I, you know, I understand. And honestly, looking at the schedule last time and this time, the only place that you can save time in a lot of cases is the posting. But I will remind everyone, the last time we started this, I think it was in 2020. We started in November and we.
Hired somebody in May.
Yeah.
Started in May. I too started in November and was hired in April.
Started in May after two or three months of period giving negotiations before that. So we would, right around now.
Not exactly.
What was it? I don't, it's been a number of years now.
There, we, we worked with the town, with the city of New Bedford to allow for Ari to onboard here sooner. As long as we gave time on the other end for him to be able to work with them after he was hired. So that picked us, picked up some, some time that way.
All I can say is in my experience of hiring, keeping people engaged, we're definitely interested in you is better. Cause I've gone back to people that I would have loved to have my team. And I said, I'm sorry, something else came along. And sometimes people interview way better than they look on paper. And you're like, oh man, I wish I got to them sooner. And sometimes the opposite happens. Interview me, no way.
I mean, let's, you know, let's same position just what? Three years ago, we got 40 applicants for. And this isn't just the town administrator position. It's other positions, department head positions in towns and cities too. So, you know.
Okay, so concerns heard, concerns noted. Let's just get this.
What's the action plan? What's the action item?
No, no, I think that the action's already in motion.
So we're okay, so we're not changing anything?
But I think your concerns are noted. And tighten up that process. New business. I got some. Only if it's going to put a smile on our faces.
None of this is probably, maybe one thing will. So just a, I don't know if anyone else has received calls and messages about the new housing bill that allows for the accessory dwelling unit. So I feel like this is going to be one of those things that's going to go like this. And then like this, and then taper off at some point down the road. However, I just, if, I, I don't know what it's going to take for our building department and our health department to get through septic tank stuff, building permits, whatever. I just, you know, want to let folks know that in those departments, Nate, I know Nate's received, not inundated, but he's received a lot of requests. I don't know if we can help those offices navigate this.
Whatever, they made a lot of direction from the state. The state gave no, uh, heads up. No, it just happened and it's so unclear. The language is, is it one dwelling? Is it multiple dwellings? They just have to be under 900 square feet?
Yep.
Five or six of them?
Singular.
Like, yeah. I think, you know, Nate and, and, and company have looked at it and have said all Title V will remain in place and, you know, that. But I did just send a quick email to Amy Questle last week and I said, KP log, I'm going to send one of those summary. And she's led, I'm working on it. I'm like, okay. So I'm sure the town administrator will send that out to us and to all parties and boards that need it as soon as we receive it from them. But, you know, I guess.
It's a good thing it just was done a really bad way.
Yeah.
I, I, it's, it's good in certain circumstances. This is going to be super challenging. Right, so everybody thinks they're going to be able to do this. But then we've got a lot of smaller lots in town that are already at their nitrification limits based on square footage. They're not going to be able to do this at all.
Right.
And then when you do add a couple more bedrooms in there, like, okay, well, there's, there's nothing in the law now that says it has to be like related. So this is no longer like family only.
No, that's hard to enforce anyway.
So now it's going to be, okay, well, we're all, we're always concerned about big housing developments and what's it going to do to the school? And now the state basically said, everybody can double up on their lots.
And I think, they didn't limit it to one.
I think the building department and the health department are going to be, not again inundated, but I'm sure there's going to be some folks coming forward to try to legalize stuff that they perhaps have already done, which we certainly would like them to do, but it's still work that they're going to have to get through. So.
Amy Questle, when she comes to the meeting to discuss 40B.
Yep.
Maybe add this to that too.
Then the next thing that I have a question goes to, Maureen talked about it, Maureen talked about it. This is probably the most transparent board I've ever been on as far as all my years of selectmen, you know, whatever. Because we want people out there reading our packet. We want them to know what we're talking about. We want, you know, folks to know what's going on. But it's presented a problem for me because I know in the past, like when I was the chair, I would get things and I would say, okay, this is going to be on a meeting coming up as soon as I would get it. Or, you know, or any former town administrator, whatever, can you send this out so we all have it? So I also find myself putting on the brakes sometimes with like all this stuff for, you know, the property that we just discussed and, you know, like the motion. And also like Amy Questle last week, well, it was the one simple email, are you going to send it? You know, I'm not sure, I don't know how to gauge anymore what I should and shouldn't be passing around to everyone. Cause I feel like, you know, we have less of a restriction as far as the open meeting law. So where we can actually talk to each other, but I feel like I'm holding back more.
No, and I, I can appreciate that. I was just going to say, you know, with regards to that too, the, when members reach out to town council about a question, and this is not just our board. I'm sure it happens with other boards too. It used to happen on the school committee. You have a question, I have a question, you have a question. We got three people calling town council. Let's try to find a way, let's, you know, kind of think about it, we'll step back, we'll think about it, we'll bring it back. What'll work for this board? In, in terms of, hey, if I'm thinking it, somebody else is thinking it and would like to get those answers. So maybe that might help alleviate some of that too. But I, I know what you're saying, like, you know, because you can go through our town administrator and say, listen, here's information that I have, I know I've done it. Would you please disseminate this out to the board? And maybe a future agenda item or something, I guess.
So Leah, if I could just throw some perspective on there. When one of the members before would reach out to town council, I would ask town council to respond in writing and respond to everyone. That way it's not coming from you. It's a response from town council.
And, and I typically don't reach out to town council, but this, the thing with Amy Questle last week, I was like, they've got to be sending, which really, I mean, that's like such a small thing. Otherwise, I've always gone through the town administrator on legal questions. I mean, you know, every now and then I maybe called Michelle Randazzo for something. I, I, but in the, for the most part, you know, but it's still, you know, like these pictures. I got the pictures today. Should I send, you know what I mean? So I'm just a little confused. And if I'm the only one, then I can certainly work with.
If it's just information purposes and you're not giving your opinion, like information can be shared. Like, you know, if you're not saying, this is what we should do, like on this, information can be shared readily.
Well, and I, but see, I just don't know what the tone, I know I can do that, but I feel like the tone of the board is a little bit different. Like we want to just, you know, do most of our work here as opposed to via email. And I feel like.
I like as much information as I can get and read. So I can sit down with it and digest it the night before and then write my notes up, just as my personal way that I do it. I, I sit down over the weekend, I, I go through everything and, and write my notes up. But I'm sure everyone does things different. But I, I would have appreciated like that layer of information.
Yeah, because I totally changed my thought process once, once I saw pictures. So I.
And in that particular case also, I mean, you know, we have zoning issues at hand, there's conserva, so it's really, you know, hard to.
You know, and as, as your chair, I want to make sure that I'm doing my job the best way that I can so that the information is there, available to you. I mean, Tracy and Bob, you know, I, I see C Bob on everything. You know, they know, please include this, please include this, please include this, you know, in the packet. Because it's, it's relevant, you know, to the discussion and decisions that we have to be, to be made. And if, I guess if I'm not prepared to make a decision, I, I've done it before. I would just say, well, I'm not ready to make a decision tonight. But I know that some of these issues are, you know, they're pressing and.
And by the way, I got the pictures at 8:08 this morning. So it wasn't like I've been hanging on to them for a week or anything.
But that was my question was like, when did we get the, you know, the picture? So today made sense. But anything that we can, can funnel through, you know, the town administrator, because they're going to be our record keeper. So they're going to know, yes, then information got disseminated out on this date at this time.
Read your email.
Yeah.
Just make sure everyone gets the same information. And like town council, you could, you could totally go through Bob and have him ask the question. And that way he can write, he can write the question down and then we can see what the question was to the answer. Cause I knew sometimes it's like, all right, but what was the question? Like, I'm not, I'm not quite following like the chain, like what was, what was the question?
Or what was the answer and do the rest of us agree? Oh, okay, that makes sense. Then keep going.
Right. Or, and then at that point, you could go back and say, could you please expand on this?
As far as town council's concerned, I call town council, I think the least. Cause I just, I think that's a, a job that falls to the chair and then to disseminate the information to the rest of us. If you need help as the vice chair, I will help you, but.
I appreciate that.
All right, moving on to my third thing. We did get an email from the parks on trunk or treat. I was going to send an email on that. I loved doing trunk or treat with you last year, Maureen. Brian, we loved using your money for the candy. I have a wedding that day, but I'm willing to help anyone put anything together.
What, when is it?
October.
It's three to six, I believe.
Maureen whipped up something so cute for us in like two seconds flat. I can't imagine what we could do if we plan for a month, so.
Thank you. It was, it was such a fantastic time. And I publicly here, for those of you that will be watching the meeting, might, it's still only been three hours. I challenge boards, committees and commissions and town departments to join in on the trunk and treat.
October 20th, 3:30.
Let the challenge begin.
How mu, how much space do you get for trunk or treat? Each.
Your vehicle.
Oh, it has to be contained in your vehicle.
Or your vehicle space.
But if you need, well, I mean, we want to get as many people there.
Not like 20 feet out, but just.
There was a space last year.
Yeah.
But there were so many kids, there were over 300 kids that came through. I just think it was fantastic, but.
Did you say the 20th?
It says, she said, Melissa put the 20th, but.
Cause the webpage is last year's date.
Oh, I haven't even looked at my emails today.
Oh, I haven't even looked at my emails today since I've been here, so my apologies.
Three thirty to five, six, three thirty to six. Yep. I can't be there, but I have tons of decorations, work at my house, work at Maureen's house. I think between she and I, we have all the decorations that Walmart's ever had.
I know. That's it, I'm done.
Excellent.
Very good.
Yay. We're good. Anybody else for new business? I can't think of anything, okay?
Old business.
Actually, I have one. It, do you think it's possible that we can have, put on an agenda, like, to talk about a hard deadline for submission of items for the agenda?
Yep. Because I know we've talked about this many years ago.
Didn't we have something in place?
By Tuesday?
We, we have, but it's gone by the wayside, and it's just, um, I was getting stuff today, and I, I'm scrambling.
No, no. But that's when you throw it my way, and I'll let you know.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's an emergency, you know, I might be able to add something, um, but not at the level of agenda topics that we...
I think it always was, the Tuesday, the Thursday, a meeting.
And then, uh, the chair gets on and decides on the Wednesday, then it goes on the Thursday.
The thing we have to include, that we must have all relevant information by the deadline.
I think that's acceptable.
And if we don't have it, it doesn't go on.
Right, I think that's fine.
Okay. That would make life a lot easier.
I would just still like, as a non-chair, to get the information sooner, because trying to digest it all between Thursday afternoon to, tonight is very difficult sometimes. A hundred and something page, that gets it going.
So digesting meaning to find if we need to add anything else on, or once it's been decided?
Once it's been decided, going through and saying, is there anything here that I, now that I see it for the first time, that maybe when I ask some department heads, or Bob, or whatever it might be, to educate myself on a topic beforehand?
I do not disagree, because otherwise it's, you know, that's how I spend my Sunday.
Yeah, right.
And that's, and that's how I spend my Monday mornings.
That's exactly what I do.
Even though I know what's on the agenda, because I helped set it, but I'm still like not sure about the backup of some of the stuff, but...
So, yeah, let's do, um, Tuesday. Oh, no, if we do a Wednes, if we say the Monday before, so one week before the scheduled meeting for submittals. And agenda review will take place on Tuesday mornings, with the draft agenda going out Tuesday afternoon. And perhaps we can have the posting done on Wednesday, and the packet's out on Thursday.
It's no different than now.
There's going to have to be some exceptions, because things come in.
Of course they do.
That need to be addressed.
Of course.
Because keep in mind, Friday's like a half day, so if we get our stuff Thursday afternoon, we've got three hours to... We have to look at it that Thursday night, and then try to get questions on Friday, or else we're bugging people Monday.
Why don't I work with Bob and Tracy and come up with something, but with something that might be for discussion?
I always advocate for no Monday meetings, so later in the week.
Well, Monday meetings are just a horrible idea with a, a half day on Friday, anyways.
Yeah.
That's, that's always been a kind of, you know, thing, but the pushback was, everyone else has all the other days locked and loaded. We'd have to like push planning board out.
We'll talk about it, let's talk about it, okay? All right, old business, Arpa, you gave us a handout this evening.
Yeah, just a quick update. Just a quick update from last select board meeting, you have an updated spreadsheet, two spreadsheets in front of you. The Clea, the Clea Pond Park water project has been approved by Plymouth County.
Excellent.
The bid opening, uh, will be September sixteenth. Uh, the U T V transport trailer has been delivered, and the voting tabulators have been delivered. Moving to direct funding, the, uh, I updated the pavilion, uh, what we are allocating. Um, ten thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars has already been expended. Uh, the bid came in at sixty nine thousand dollars, so we would need to use thirty nine thousand out of opera funds, uh, to at least to satisfy, satisfy the bid. And we're using twenty thousand dollars from the cultural council, five thousand dollars from the library building fund, and five thousand dollars from the library gift account, totaling sixty nine thousand dollars. And then talking to the facilities manager, another five thousand dollars will be needed for, um, materials, trim, that the facilities manager will be doing once the pavilion, um, is up. So we're talking, um, you know, close to eighty thousand dollars for, for the pavilion.
And then still, we have to go back for the audio equipment?
Yes, which we need to do soon, I need to, uh, work on that, yes. So that is, uh, in interest, um, we have earned fifty four thousand two hundred and thirty five dollars in, in interest, which is about ten thousand dollars more from the, uh, in the last, uh, reporting. So leaves us about eight thousand one hundred and one dollars. Again, a lot depends on the Clea Pond bid, because that's a big number.
Yes.
So that is it, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
A question, Madam Chair, so you hear you're at eight thousand one hundred and one?
Yes.
What's the two twenty five?
Oh, eight thousand dollars on the bedroom.
Direct.
Direct.
Okay.
Two twenty five balance on the Plymouth County.
Do we have project ideas in the queue in case something comes back?
I have, um, I'm talking to Franklin on concessions.
Okay, sorry.
Yep.
Have we approached Parks on how that would work operationally?
No, I didn't know how deep we want to dive in on the conversation, at least it doesn't happen.
Can you hear okay?
Yeah, I, sorry to hear.
I didn't...
Yeah, I, um, I can hear, makes, the whole thing makes me nervous, but...
What part of it?
Just Brian's question, who's going to manage it?
Who's going to manage it, who's going to stock it, who owns the stock? Because if it's like, I don't know how the leagues do it today, right? Do they share stock at the snack shacks, or is it like baseball stuff is baseball, soccer's soccer's?
Leah would know, uh, back in my day, it was donated.
Whatever organization was running the snack shack bought all the stock, and they would, the way it used to be, and again, it's been a little while, um, it would alternate every year between Lakeville Playground Association and Little League for the snack bar that's at Ted Williams. The football was always done, they didn't use the snack shack, they would just always do it like off of tables. And it was the, um, the boosters group, I think that would do that.
Football moved over to, uh, Long Pond a few years ago, and they built, uh, a, a snack shop.
Okay, all right. I've just never personally been involved in a snack shack where there's like multiple organizations sharing the facility. So like, I just, or if there was, they weren't in overlapping seasons. Football was there for their season, baseball was there for their season, they just don't know how it works.
I've just never been in a town that didn't have one available.
Well, that's true too.
At all of the things. My kids have been involved in all sorts of sports for the last, you know, eighteen years. Every single town I've gone to has some form of a snack shop, even if it's an outsourced, outside.
Outsourced, yeah.
That they're, they're doing like the, the burgers and dogs on, every single one of them. And that's how they're, you know, funding things, and that's how they're, you know, getting people in, uh, you know, to volunteer.
It's, it's, this particular item, I think it's definitely worth conversation with Parks, just to figure out, if we give you this thing.
What can you do?
Right, how do you manage it?
How do you manage it, what are you going to do with it, what can you turn over with it? Um, because a lot of the other stuff we're doing is really minimal operational.
Yeah, well, it all depends, I mean, if you want to load it up and put cooking stuff, that's a different conversation. But if this is just freezers and places to store snacks and stuff like that, it, operationally, it makes a lot of sense in order to have it, that you could move it technically, move it if you needed to. And, you know, price-wise, it doesn't even compare.
Yeah, I agree with having it, it's just who's, who's operating it, who's watching the stocks, the cash.
There's a bunch of stuff that, you know, there's what health involves, and, you know, yeah.
You know, cash flow, which we're trying to get rid of, but, or handling, sorry.
That's the whole point of that.
Excellent.
Covid, I mean, the, uh, the funding is, we'll want to try to find sources for revenue as well. We don't want to have things that are just draining on the revenue.
Now we get plenty of those.
All right. I'm, I'm going to move the, the next topic to the next meeting. Um, I don't think anybody's going to argue with me, so.
What, the rest of it?
Yep. Okay. All right, next select board meeting, August twenty sixth at five thirty. Here. It should be here. Um, I just want to say thank you, um, I know that meetings are long, um, and I don't... It's beyond me, because I look at our old meetings from years past, and, you know, we have stuff, but I think that this committee is really at a time in our space here, where there's a lot going on, and a lot of decisions need to be made, so.
I would question whether or not, is the town getting to a point of size and complexity where we should entertain looking at a town manager, and offloading some of these responsibilities, and just focusing more on the policy and the...
Four months ago before a search goes out.
We weren't ready at the time.
I, I understand exactly where Brian's point is, and for me, it's, um, I just want to be sure all our offices right now have what they need. I feel like we're lacking a little bit of internal coordination, um...
No offense.
No, 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 we love you.
Just to be clear.
Yeah, I've had this conversation with Bob. I mean, I feel like our boards are so busy, and that's why I'm nervous about the new housing bill thing that, you know, I just...
No, but I, I agree, I think the boards are very busy. I think we should probably have, this is part of our greater discussion, when we have the, um, the wage and personnel, we should probably have a bigger discussion about, you know, how many days a week are we going to be open in town hall? What's the right structure for each department? We have a lot of changes that have happened in the last few years. Some places need more people, some people, maybe they need less people. Like, you know, maybe that's, no one's going to say we need less people. But like, some, like some areas, maybe technology has changed, you know, to the point where, you know, something needs to go. But I think it's our job to kind of bring those to the surface and, and have conversations, even if we don't actually make significant changes, just knowing that we're looking at those things and talking about them, it's pretty relevant for, you know...
I mean, Maureen, we don't even have a, a sp, a spot to put a desk, if we could hire people. So I know we...
You could put them in Powderly's oval office. No, this is, this is a lot, and I know, and I appreciate the fact that I work with, um, members on this, this board.
Agenda item thirty, are we doing that?
Correspondence, usually it's not, it's just received.
Got it, thank you.
Um, Bob said no.
I'm with you, I just...
Usually, um, drop the paperwork. This was a massive agenda, and I think we did great.
Yeah.
We did.
You know, we, it's before nine o'clock.
I think that this, this particular board is an action board, um, and we like to see, you know, action items, and, um, and we're just kind of working through it, so.
I appreciate you all.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Second.
It's eight fifty-three.
There you are.
Katie and I.
Carbone and I.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, Irene.